We started a few minutes late. We know it's very packed and we're going to move right along with the agenda. It is Tuesday, February the 10th. It's about 6:05. All my council members are here and it looks like most of the community is here as well. So, welcome and goodness gracious, it's a great thing we're building a new town hall. Because if we can get government disengaged, we're going to need it. First thing on the agenda this evening is a prayer and then the pledge. And I have a chaplain that will be leading us in prayer. And if you will join us, then we will have Mr. Glass lead us in the pledge. Michael.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael. It's an honor to stand before you. Would you bow your heads with me? Well, we first of all want to come remember Chi-Pai and how he gave 30 years of his life to this incredible community. Whereas he laid to rest this few days ago, we remember him and his family and how they blessed all of his hard efforts in taking care of us. Thank you, Lord. Well, we want to thank you for who you are and what you mean to us. And, Lord, I thank you for the United States of America. What an honor and a blessing that we could come and voice our opinion and we can let those folks that can help lead us. So, tonight, Lord, we ask for wisdom for all the town council and mayor and all that they do making decisions. And for every one of us that make our opinions, Lord, may we do it with the strength and the confidence that you're going to guide us and encourage us. And I pray and I speak peace over this gathering tonight and everything will be resolved and bring protection to all of us. But what an honor to live in this country. In my name and Jesus, all God's been and women have said.
Amen.
As we say the pledge together, I know there is someone walking in amongst the residents that had a World War II hat on. If you get a chance to shake his hand, it's hard to believe that those here are so among us certainly coming tonight. You drop me in the pledge. Place the flag. And the pledge will begin.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We might need to adjust the sound. Can y'all hear me?
No.
No. Okay. Martine? Okay, he's adjusting as we speak. So, anyway, I asked Mr. Pagarene if we were in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's affirmed. Item number four is approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I move that we amend the agenda to move up, under committee reports, item number M, transportation report. If we move that up to move into, right before we move into seven, before correspondence and public statements. And then also if we would move up council new business, item, all of item nine, to number seven on the agenda following transportation.
Thank you. That's all of 11 under new business, 11, 1A and 2B.
A and B, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We have motion, second all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and the ayes have. Next, we have a few public hearings, awards, and presentations. I'm going to turn it over to our town administrator, Eric DeMora.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Rabbi Repson, Deanie Jo, and others that may be with you, would you honor us, being present up on stage, please?
Mayor Page, council members, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to go ahead and read the Day of Remembrance proclamation, followed by a few words by Rabbi Repson. Proclamation. Whereas the Holocaust was a state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European jewelry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, Jews were the primary victims, 6 million of whom were murdered. Gypsies, the handicapped, and Poles were also targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons. Millions more, including homosexuals, Jehovah's Witnesses, and Soviet prisoners of war and political dissidents, also suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas, the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. And whereas, we, the people of Mount Pleasant, should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And whereas, we, the people of Mount Pleasant, should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom and a just society. And whereas, the Days of Remembrance have been set aside for the people of Mount Pleasant to remember the victims of the Holocaust, as well as to reflect on the need for respect of all peoples. And whereas, pursuant to an act of Congress, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the Days of Remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust to be Sunday, April 12th through Sunday, April 19th, 2015, including the Day of Remembrance, known as Yom Ashoah, Sunday, April 19th, 2015. Now therefore, Mayor Linda Page, Mayor of the town of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim the week of Sunday, April 12th through Sunday, April 19th, as Days of Remembrance in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of the survivors, as well as the rescuers and liberators. And further proclaim that we, as citizens of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, should promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. I encourage you to join the community in remembering the victims during the community-wide Yom Ashoah program, Sunday, April 19th, at 2:30 PM at Marion Square. Signed, Linda Page, Mayor of the town of Mount Pleasant.
During the Holocaust, on average, 3,000 Jews were murdered every day for five and a half years. If we were to observe a minute of silence for each of those victims, the silence would last for more than 11 years. And so, the hate continued in Bosnia with the Serbs and the Croats and the Muslims. And then in Rwanda, families who had been friends for years almost overnight became enemies and started killing one another. In Rwanda, 800,000 people were killed in a space of less than 100 days. And let us never think it could not happen again. In some form or another, it is happening again, and we are witnessing it night after night on our television screens in one part of the world or another. And tomorrow, who knows where. And that is why we have to work at building bridges across the abyss that might otherwise separate people of different races and faiths, creating communities like this extraordinary community of Mount Pleasant built by extraordinary leaders, where we celebrate instead of feeling threatened by diversity, where we recognize the dignity of difference, and where we understand that one who is not in my image is still in God's image, even if his color is not mine or his culture is not mine, even if his religion is not mine. And we understand the religious challenge, to see and to never lose sight of the trace of God in the face of a stranger. As we light our candles tonight, may God bless us all and may God bless the survivors. And may God give you the courage to fight hate in the name of our shared humanity. And may we never be afraid to fight for a world in which no one has to live in fear. Thank you.
The yellow candle that the members of council are lighting right now is modeled after a traditional Jewish yard sign memorial candle that burns for 24 hours during periods of mourning and on the anniversary of the death of a family member. The candle's yellow wax reminds us of the yellow armband which Jews were forced to wear during the Nazi regime. A photo on the candle container shows young people at the gates of Auschwitz. This emphasizes the importance of teaching our youth the lessons of the Holocaust and remembering the 6 million.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Rabbi. Thank you. Now I'm going to turn it over to Mark Smith. He has his special guest.
I'd like Jonathan Green and Marjorie Whitworth to join me as part of the team. Mayor, fellow council members, and all of our members of our town, it's an honor tonight to introduce a very special gentleman who is certainly no stranger to this community and to this council, our painter, printmaker, local artist, Jonathan Green. You have been, you're an important contemporary painter and been a part of the Southern experience. Jonathan was born, I'm going to leave the year out, in Gardens Corner. Was the second of seven children, raised in the home of his maternal grandmother, Eloise Johnson, where he learned the gala dialect and the culture of the coastal southeast. He's a graduate of Beaufort High School. He joined the U.S. Air Force. He's a graduate of the School of the Art Institute of Chicago, receiving his bachelor's there. Jonathan's work, Jonathan has participated in four traveling exhibitions throughout the United States, and I believe the number has grown, but 48 solo exhibitions. His work is in permanent collections in numerous museums that would take all night to talk about. Most importantly, in 2009, Jonathan received the Key of Life Award for his contributions and achievement in the visual fine arts from the NAACP at the organization's 40th Image Award. Jonathan's here tonight as our invited guest to introduce a very special Mount Pleasant resident and who's going to share a very special work that she's created recently. Jonathan, please.
Good evening to everyone, and it is indeed a pleasure to be here. Whenever you see the supportive community showing up for whatever the issues are, it is truly exciting. My reason for being here is a very simple one. Here in your town of Mount Pleasant, and first let me stop by saying greetings, Mayor and council members. Let me get to my point. You have a living legend in your city. You have the poet laureate, Marjorie Wentworth, and she's been the poet laureate since 2003. And I can't help but want to introduce this lady to you to let you know that in your town, you have greatness, and in your town, your greatness should be appreciated. I'd like to introduce you to Marjorie Wentworth and her poem, "One Boat, One River." Thank you.
Thank you for having me and thank you for that introduction and thank you. So, many of you know I wasn't allowed to read this poem at the governor's inauguration and probably that's why many of you have heard of it. So, it worked out in my favor. And, all right, "One river, one boat." Because our history is a knot, we try to unravel while others try to tighten it. We tire easily and fray the cords that bind us. The cord is a slow-moving river spiraling across the land in a succession of S's, splintering near the sea. Picture us all crowded onto a boat at the last bend in the river. Watch children stepping off the school bus, parents late for work, grandparents fishing for favorite memories, teachers tapping their desks with red pens, firemen suiting up to save us, nurses making rounds, baristas grinding coffee beans, dock workers unloading apartment-sized containers of computers and toys from factories across the sea. Every morning, a different veteran stands at the base of the bridge, holding a cardboard sign with misspelled words and an empty cup. In fields at daybreak, rows of migrant farm workers standing on ladders break open iced peach blossoms, their breath rising and resting above the frozen fields like clouds. A John boat drifts down the river. Inside, a small boy lies on his back, hands laced behind his head. He watches stars fade from the sky and dreams. Consider the prophet John calling us from the edge of the wilderness to name the harm that has been done and enter the river and rise. It is not about asking for forgiveness. It is not about bowing our heads in shame, because it all begins and ends here, while workers unearth trenches at Gadsden's Wharf where 100,000 Africans were imprisoned within brick walls, awaiting auction, death, or worse. Where the dead were thrown into the water and the river clogged with corpses has kept centuries of silence. It is time to gather at the water's edge and toss wreaths into this watery grave, and it is time to praise the judge who cleared George Stinney's name, 70 years after the fact. We honor him, we pray. Here, where the Confederate flag still flies beside the State House, haunted by our past, conflicted about our future at the heart of it, we are at war with ourselves, huddled together on this one boat handed down to us, stuck at the last bend of a wide river, splintering near the sea. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, as we celebrate and honor Black History Month in February, we just said the Pledge of Allegiance earlier tonight. And in that, we said, "We are one nation, under God, indivisible." Mayor, it is no coincidence, I believe, that we had the opportunity to bring Marjorie here to share her point, that we have the largest standing room crowd in a very long time. We are one community here to serve and to do good for all. That is what we've all committed and took our vows to do. I encourage you, if you've not seen the movie Selma, please see the movie. Please continue regardless of your race, creed, religion. Remember, we are one nation, under God, and we should remain indivisible. God bless you and thank you for being here.
Ryan Johnson, Garrett Hennarington, please come forward. Go and walk two steps. Eric, thank you for being here. Mayor Page, council members, Director A. Ladies and gentlemen, we have in front of us today two very important employees of the town of Mount Pleasant, two extraordinary employees, Ryan Johnson and Garrett Hennarington, who found themselves in an extraordinary situation on the night of January 13th, of which they were working the wrestling program of the Glendale High School. And 6:30 at night, when the program had finished and walked outside, it's dark outside, and all of a sudden, an SUV comes up quickly, flashing its lights, honking its horn, and something's the matter. Lady rolls down the window with the elderly lady sitting in the driver's side, and she needs help. Her husband is sitting next to her on the passenger side of the vehicle, bleeding very, very heavily, and she needed an emergency room. And fortunate for everyone involved, Mount Pleasant Hospital is nearby. And thanks to Garrett and thanks to Ryan, they were able to get in the car and direct this lady and her husband to the emergency room and rope. And when they got there, as I understand it, Garrett ran in to contact the ER staff. Ryan followed in behind to get a wheelchair for the gentleman, and they stood there and took his family alive. After the incident, it became clear that the gentleman had a very, very serious laceration on his head and was bleeding very, very badly. And if not for the quick work and action to care for others by these two individuals, that situation might have ended heartbreaking. So, for Garrett's work and Ryan's work, they have been nominated by our department managers as employees of the company.
How about I just give it out to them? Congratulations. Thank you. How about that? A member for you.
Mayor, council members, come forward.
Certainly. We have two open seats here now. I could all sit down. I bet I could.
Mayor Page, council members, ladies and gentlemen, we have some football state champions. Our representatives.
Folks, I really appreciate you all of y'all coming out here to recognize the football team tonight. It really looks good and I've been very proud. This is a 12-year-old All-Star football team that won the 2014 SCAP championship this year. They did it by beating both North Charleston and Hanahan in our area, and then won the Southern District by beating Orangeburg and blanking Orangeburg, I think it was 22 to nothing, that defeated Orangeburg. Then the hard part came. They had to go up to the lower state championship and play Dillon. And as you know, in football in South Carolina, Dillon's one of those hotbeds, and they blanked them 14 to nothing. And it didn't get any easier, because if you know Rock Hill is up there too, where they grow big young men, and they defeated Rock Hill 14 to 6 to capture the state championship. As you know, we always present when we present, and we present a sign that we put up at the field. That's the sign that goes up and that's a nation of state champions. It will stay up there until aluminum rust on it. And I must give special thanks to our coaches. Folks, we couldn't have this program without young men like this, and I ask for you young because I am over the age of. Giving their time and effort and energy, because these young men achieve perfection in their eyes. Coaches, thank you so much. Let them take pictures, you guys. Any guys that coaches by mistake tonight?
And I'd like to thank their leader, Mr. Grant, for having them to a meeting tonight. I did my dues as a Cub Scout leader, and this creates the fine men who will be up here leading us one day. So, thank y'all for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Page, but I could not do it without the rest of these fine leaders standing side by side with you. Thank you.
Y'all can sit back down then. You're taking notes, right? This is for a badge?
These boys are here, Mayor Page, for the Citizens' Merit Badge, and they couldn't pick a better night.
I love that. And if they're ever looking for opportunities to volunteer, Carter always needs help at bus stops and with putting out.
Benches and shelters, we need, they're a great Eagle Scout project, they're great scout project. We do what we want, whatever we get.
So, moving on with the agenda, item number six is the approval of the minutes from the January 13th. I have a motion and a second for the financial statement and approval. And I understand the passion about this issue and other traffic calming measures that might be employed. What gets me a little bit is that I was waiting for the planning committee to meet this past week, and what we were told is that the planning, uh, transportation committee meeting was running over for a long time. And that recommendation was coming to move forward on a certain item tonight, which apparently it's not going to, it's going to go back to committee. What I hope that we could do, though, moving forward, Mayor, is, one thing that concerns me is that we have scores of people here tonight, and I wish we could have messaged to them in some way that, guess what? It looks like it's going to be the will of council to lob the ball back to a committee. And it's not clapping, it's just kind of, and I know government works like that, but coming to meetings, for instance, transportation committee meeting meets on Monday, generally a Monday morning, which is, in my view, not the most convenient time in the world. And then, and then we announce, we allow the hallways to become super crowded with folks, and it may well be the proper thing to go back to the committee. I just hope that as we go down the road, that we could look to some deficiencies and how to message to y'all, the public, that maybe, you know, some folks felt like there was going to be a vote tonight, it was going to kind of be an up or down, and probably arranged whether it was childcare, or got off from work early, or skipped an event they wanted to go to, or just frankly didn't, you know, have something else. So I'm just being mindful of that. I'm reluctant to send it back to the committee. But I apologize for all of you, to all of you, for if you kind of changed your life to come here tonight, only to find that the whole thing is probably going back to right where it was a week ago Monday. So that's what I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. I certainly appreciate that sentiment. I don't apologize. I did reply to one hundred fifty emails. If you had HOAs, I would have had direct contact with your HOA. I know you choose your neighborhoods because you don't want HOA, and I get that. I'll be glad to do whatever y'all want. Y'all let me know. If you don't have the mayor's cell phone, y'all are out of the loop. We'll meet in the gym, we'll do charades, we'll do what you need. We're going to fix it this time. We got a motion and a second. We're going to get it right. We're going to help y'all. Is that all good?[743.23][743.23](applause).
I've got a deadline.
You want a deadline?
Yeah.
No, 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 we can't wait thirty more years. I'm only in office for going to have more, so that's that one part. Um, it depends on you guys. Y'all get together, get with me, get your representatives together, and let me know what you want to do.
We did that.
It's going to committee. You'll have lots of time to talk about it. That'll be next month. Committee will be next month. Y'all give me something solid by next month, we will vote on it, up or down.
It's about more than the same neighborhoods.
Great. I'm sorry.
No, this is about the whole flow of traffic on Coleman.
I understand, and we want to keep order at the council meeting. I certainly appreciate that. We will hear all of your concerns. We really will.
How about the four homeowners who are trying to...
Um, we have, we have actually addressed...
The four of us.
Yes.
Nobody came to our house. None, zero.
Right, and I apologize for that. If we had ever one of your emails, we would have sent you an email. I apologize for that.
What about this seven o'clock? They should have gone there. Ninety percent, right?
Absolutely.
But it was not ninety percent. That's secure, because there were many of us who were not even contacted.
And we will verify that. We're not moving forward without verification. I appreciate that. Yes, ma'am, we have another comment from Ms. Stokes-Marshall.
Hello, Mayor, all council members and members of the audience. Obviously, there are a number of folks here from a number of different connecting communities to the grove who are concerned about the proposed changes. I would strongly recommend that we try to identify at least one or two individuals from all of the respective communities, have them to contact our transportation director, Mr. Brad Morrison, and submit their names as representing their community. With that in mind, the mayor has suggested that this item be referred back to the transportation committee. Those individuals will be contacted and asked to attend the transportation committee meeting so that they can then have the opportunity to engage in the decision-making process.
It's good, the community is divided. I'm going to get a representative from the grove, what we all think differently about.
Sir?
Unite into one party. Unite the two neighborhoods.
I just, I heard a gentleman say that the, there are communities that are divided. Folks, we are trying to engage the community in the decision-making process. If you know that there's division within your community, we would hope that the members, the residents that live in that community would work to bridge that gap. We need your help and your support.
We hear you, and we have some people signed up on their public comments. We do have full approval to take this back to the planning committee, and, you know, it is a neighborhood issue. We don't want to pit neighborhood against neighborhood and citizens against citizens. We want to do it right, and we want to have solutions. And we're open-minded. We can't solve it tonight. We can sit here and argue with each other till the cows come home. But I do believe that there is division in the neighborhood, and I can't help with that. I know a lot about traffic calming. I can tell you about chicanes and chokers and one-way devices and closing, because after three years, I've been working on a problem that's existed for over twenty years. And I will fix it tonight. Please allow me some patience and give me some time to be a leader for your neighborhoods, and hopefully we can come up with a great solution. That's all I have. Have a good one.[976.23][976.23](applause). Yes, Monday, March four. Monday, March four. And we don't have time yet for the meeting. Mark Santos, I'm sorry. I don't have a calendar. I have a glass.
May I suggest we have a meeting in a forum large enough to fit this crowd in?
We, we can have it in the gym if you like. We'll make the gym available. And she hasn't notified me. If you don't think you're getting information, please grab one of these for Martine, make sure you get the information. Thank you very much. Yes, there was one other item on transportation committee, and that was our report. I will submit that to the department for the review.
Another day.
Y'all, if anyone needs to, you'll take two minutes. Council, you only need two minutes.
Michael Benz.
That's Christopher. That's another one.
I'm heading out, man. How you doing? You staying for the whole night?
Yeah.
I wonder what the money is back there. What was it?
Excuse me, yes.
Sure. Sorry.
Thank y'all very much. We still have a lengthy agenda to attack. And the agenda was amended earlier, so the next thing on the agenda is council new business. And that is item number eleven A. Now, we'll make sure eleven A and B. And this item was put on the agenda by Mr. K. Glasson, and I will turn it over to Council Glasson. And A one, it's eleven A and B, I believe. A one...
A one and two are the same thing. B.
B. So yes, all of new business.
Excuse me, B is open, so I'm sorry. New business is eleven A, one and two.
So now we have transportation. Everybody good? Ellen, you good? All right, Mr. Glasson was the councilman asked us, we put on the agenda. So I turn it over to you, Mr. Glasson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and appreciate the questions, Mr. Carey. Ladies and gentlemen, Madam Mayor, if I could, I want to, I have a large number of comments to this, but I would like to, at this time, just defer to Mr. Garich and have these co-sponsors there, and we go over a little bit of the background and history with these, sit here a little bit longer, and then if I could have that over back afterwards, have some items I'd like to discuss with this forum.
Okay, thank you. And this is the consideration of the request by Shem Creek Development Group, LLC, to amend the parking license agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Glasson. Thank you, Mayor Page. On this item, I did co-sponsor it, Mr. Glasson contacted me last Thursday morning. This item has been around since October of two thousand and thirteen, and before I make any attempt to give a great summary of how it started, what it's been doing, and where it is now, I'm going to allow our wonderful town administrator, Mr. Eric Demure, give us all the timeline, so we'll all understand exactly what we have on our hands.
Thank you. So we'll turn it over to Mr. Form. You have a question, Mr. Marks?
Yes, right, thank you. Okay, Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, in preparation for discussion on this item, I thought it was prudent to go ahead and give you the history, the timeline, all the actions that were taken to get us up to this point here today. So I put together a few slides to review with you. First one is about the timeline and the history. And you'll see, in the middle of October two thousand and thirteen, the current parking license agreement, the one that is in place today, was approved by town council. And to give some insight as to what councils thought for at the time, the best I can do is to go right to the resolution that was approved, and I extracted some words that were in that resolution. You'll see words like accessibility, safety, convenience for the public. And I know one concern the council had at the time was the popularity of the businesses in the Shem Creek area, and spillover effect of what was occurring with visitors and residents going to the area, spilling over into current neighborhoods, current residential areas. It's also paid for through a separate funding source. There has been some discussion that the money that is attached to the current license agreement is Mount Pleasant resident property tax money, and it is not. It's accommodations tax money. It's a different funding source paid by visitors who stay in our hotels. It's two percent tax on visitors who stay in hotels, commonly known as heads and beds. And under the state law that governs accommodations taxes, public parking isn't allowed use. Move forward, two months later, and there was a request received by the project owner to town council to approve an increase in the height of that location of fifty-five feet. And within that same request, there was also a request to be released from the first-floor requirement. Developments along Coleman Boulevard have to build something on the first floor, whether it's retail, commercial, or residential, something has to be on the first floor, and many times that requires floodproofing if one of the properties happens to be in a flood zone. So that was in December of two thousand and thirteen, and then there was a lot of discussion, a lot of council action after that, and in the middle of April two thousand and fourteen, the setbacks in the building lines changed for that area, changed for much of Coleman Boulevard, and it affected this property. September twenty-four, fourteen, the project moved forward, and it received design review approval. And then, subsequent to that, in the middle of November, the height was reduced by town council to forty-five feet from the fifty-five feet that was granted. I will submit that to the council for the rest. Y'all, if anyone needs to, you'll take two minutes. Council, you only need two minutes.
That's another one.
I'm heading out, man. How you doing? You staying for the whole night?
Yeah.
I wonder what the money is on the tax there. What was it?
Sure. Sorry.
Thank y'all very much. We still have a lengthy agenda to attack. And, uh, the agenda was amended earlier, so the next thing on the agenda is council new business. And that is item number 11A. Now, we'll make sure 11A and B. And, uh, this item was put on the agenda by Mr. K. Glasson and I will turn it over to Councilman Glasson.
A1, it's 11A and B, I believe. A1.
A1 and 2 are the same thing. B.
B. So yes, all of new business.
Excuse me, B is, B is open, so I'm sorry. New business is 11A, 1 and 2.
So now we have clarification. Everybody good? Ellen, you good? All right, uh, Mr. Glasson was the councilman asked us we put on the agenda. So I turn it over to you, Mr. Glasson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and appreciate the clarification, uh, Mr. Carrier. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Mayor, if I could, um, I want to, I have a, a large number of comments to this, but I would like to at this time just defer to Mr. Garage, um, and have, have he co-sponsor this and we go over a little bit of the background and history with these, then here a little bit longer and then if I could have that more back afterwards, have some, um, some items I'd like to discuss with this.
Okay, thank you. And this is the consideration of the request by Shen Creek Development Group, LLC to amend the parking license agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Glasson. Thank you, Mayor Page. On this item, I did co-sponsor it as Mr. Glasson contacted me last Thursday morning. Um, this item has been around since October of 2013. And before I make any attempt to give a great summary of how it started, what it's been doing and where it is now, I'm going to allow our wonderful town administrator, Mr. Eric Demure, give us all the timeline so we'll all understand exactly what we have on our hands.
Thank you. So we'll turn it over to Mr. DeMora. Um, you have a couple of information marks?
Yes, right, thank you. Okay, Mayor, uh, council members, ladies and gentlemen, um, in preparation for discussion on this item, I thought it was prudent to go ahead and give you the history, the timeline, all the actions that were taken to get us up to this point, um, here today. So I put together a few slides to review with you. First one is about the timeline and the history. And you'll see, in the middle of October 2013, the current parking license agreement, the one that is in place today, was approved by town council. And to give some insight as to what councils thought for at the time, the best I can do is to go right to the resolution that was approved. And I extracted some words that were in that resolution. You'll see words like accessibility, safety, convenience for the public. And I know one concern the council had at the time was the popularity of the businesses in the Shen Creek area and spill over effect of what was occurring with visitors and residents going to the area spilling over into current, um, neighborhoods, current residential areas. It's also paid for through a separate funding source. There has been some discussion that the money that is attached to the current license agreement is Mount Pleasant resident property tax money. And it is not. It's accommodations tax money. It's a different funding source paid by visitors who stay in our hotels. It's 2% tax on visitors who stay in hotels, commonly known as heads and beds. And under the state law that governs accommodations taxes, um, public parking isn't allowed use. Moved forward, two months later, and there was a requ- a request received by the project owner to town council to approve an increase in the height of that location of 55 feet. And within that same request, there was also a request to be released from the first floor requirement. Um, developments along Coleman Boulevard have to build something on the first floor, whether it's retail, commercial, or residential, something has to be on the first floor. And many times that requires floodproofing if one of the properties happens to be in a flood zone. So that was in December of 2013. And then there was a lot of discussion, a lot of council action after that. And in the middle of April 2014, the setbacks in the building lines changed for that area. It changed for much of Coleman Boulevard and it affected this property. September 24th, 14, of the project moved forward and it received design review approval. And then subsequent to that, in the middle of November, the height was reduced by town council to 45 feet from the 55 feet that was granted on December 10th of 2013. On that same day, I sent a letter to the project owner's legal representation, Mr. Gray Taylor, um, letting them know that my interpretation was that based on the new project that was proposed, that the parking did not meet our parking license agreement. And I sent that letter to their legal representation on that date. So where does the project stand today? The project's approved and is vested. There is some talk that a vote here tonight on the license agreement will affect whether the project can be built or not. That is not true. What you were voting on is the public financing piece of the project, whether public financing is going to be attached to this or not. The project is approved, has design review approval, and is vested, and the project owner may submit for a building permit. Those are the facts. So what about the current license agreement? The current license agreement that's in place, it speaks of 276 parking spaces. How it's broken up is that during office hours, daytime hours, Monday through Friday, 144 are to be reserved for the office building, leaving 132 left over for the public. But on nights, on weekends, all 276 spaces are to be provided by the project for public parking. Consideration for that, as mentioned in the current agreement, is $185,000 annually, a tax money, or 2.0, just shy of 2.8 million over the term, which is 15 years. Or if you break it down a little further, it's just over $670 per space. That is the current license agreement. The project has been, uh, has been proposed and has received, received design review approval, is this one here. Let me orient you on this. It's a lot of black and white here. Uh, to the north side is Coleman Boulevard. Shen Creek down the west, Mill Street here to the right, and underneath is Church Street. So you'll see that the proposed parking structure with the office component takes up roughly half of this site here. To further orient you, this is the old trucker, Tavern and Table. That's Red's Ice House. What you have here is 234 spaces inside the structure, 234. And you have 100 that can be provided here as surface parking. So that's how the project is laid out today. So what's the total? I mentioned the 234, I mentioned the 100 surface. They can provide a total of 334 parking spaces with this project, 334. 234 in structure, 100 surface. However, there is required parking by two of the nearby businesses that must be, must be provided for. It's required. Tavern and Table, 112 minimum parking spaces required. So, Red's is 77, minimum parking spaces required. For a total of 189 total required parking spaces to meet the parking needs of these two businesses, okay? So follow my math here a little bit further. 334 total spaces minus the 189 required leaves 145 spaces left over for the public, 145. However, there is a requirement for not providing the first floor use I discussed on the first slide, which is retail, commercial, um, residential. For not providing that, which is required on the Boulevard, 100 spaces in the ordinance must be provided to the public, must be provided to the public. So 145 left over minus the 100 that the public is getting anyway, leaves 45 excess spaces free and clear, um, if the project is built. 45. So, if you do the math that I had earlier, breaking it down per space, you multiply $670 per space times a 45 spaces, you get just over $30,000 or 452,000 for the life of the term. That's the current project. I suspect as a result of the letter that I had sent to the project owner's legal council saying that the current project did not meet the stipulations provided in the license agreement, we received a new proposal. And the proposal revises a number of parking spaces, similar to what I just showed you a moment. And it requests a payment adjustment down from the 185 in the original license agreement, current license agreement, from 185 to 163, or just shy of 2.5 million dollars over the life of the term. This is my last slide, so these are your options. Your options on the table tonight are to simply not act on the new proposal. You cannot act on the request, do nothing on the request. It's an option. You also have the option to deny it, deny it with a vote of this body, or you could approve it. You could approve it with a different amount. I showed you the 45 spaces in the math a moment ago, which are excess spaces. Or it's, you have the ability and the discretion to do some variation of that at your pleasure. So that's where we are today. That's the lead-up. Those are the facts, and that's how we stand right now.
Thank you, Mr. DeMora, for that explanation. Um, I'm going to turn back to you, Mr. Arch.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeMora. I appreciate that timeline. While I realize for some of y'all that's on for the first time, that can be rather confusing. Bottom line is what's important, as you heard Mr. DeMora say, tonight, we're considering a contract, how to address that contract, and, and if, and if we ought to address it, if we're going to amend it, how we're going to amend it. It has nothing to do with the parking itself. That's something to be handled for another day. I was not on this council in October 2013 when this fir- when this contract was inked. That's not important. I was on this council in 2004 when we had a vision back then, which now is our Shen Creek Park. So we spent $6 million on one acre of land and all those docks. We spent another $2 million to fix up all those docks, which came to $8 million, which by the way was all tax increment financing money, not our direct tax dollars. While we were putting that plan together, part of the vision was, we all knew, as everybody in this room does, that Shen Creek is one of our most stellar gems. Everybody wants to come and see it, and actually it's the cleanest spin in about 300 years. It's absolutely pristine, beautiful creek. Um, while we were sitting there figuring out how to protect it, preserve it, and enhance it, we knew that more people wanted to come. We all know what it's like to park there. Hence, hence the topic about where to park people. That was early 2005, 2006. One of those things, once again, well, we'll deal with it when we get there. Hopefully the private sector will engage with what the government's done, like we're all supposed to do in this great country we live in. Since that time, we finished phase one, which you, you now know again is Shen Creek Park. And we've, uh, planned out phase two, which will take us and have the walkway completely all the way down on what I would call the west side, from where the park is now, all the way to Shen Creek Bridge, with a, a vision for a phase three, which will have, hopefully, when we can work things out with DFT, an attached separate walkway on the bridge. And the, and the vision and the dream is, is when someone comes to Shen Creek, if they do come in a car, they park in one spot, they get out of their car, and they're able to traverse and walk every square inch of Shen Creek without moving their car. So you fast forward to a piece of property where some folks have it zoned where they can do a four-story office space with parking. And again, I was not on council time, what, what, what important, but it was part of fulfilling a vision. Why don't we approach the private sector and see if we can join in with them to establish a park? Negotiations began, it got to the point where Mr. DeMora told you about, they inked the contract, where they came back to the town because to get so many spots, they wanted to go up 10 feet in the air. Matter of fact, when I came back on council with Mr. Santos, Mr. Smith, that item was voted on 8 to 1, and Mr. Pingeri, of course, did not vote for that item. It was 8 to 1 to grant the 10 feet to help get the spot. As Mr. DeMora told you, four or five months later, we're working on amending our Coleman Ovale district, which we did. Those amendments impacted the setbacks on this piece of property. What that meant was, is that it made the piece of property too small for the building they wanted to do to get the numbers. So they submitted their plan, and as you saw, by direction of this council, which is where this has always been, by the way, it hasn't been on a committee level, and that's why it's here again tonight. It's back with our full council because it's that important and it needs to be. By the direction of this council, it was understood that Mr. DeMora would review the project, as he did, and he deemed that it did not have the parking spots required to meet the contract that was inked in October of 2013. Therefore, he submitted a letter and sent it to the applicant. So what's happened since then, after these 14, 15 months? I, I said something to, to Eric the other day. This has been like an unfortunate dangling chad. It hadn't, it, it hadn't been cleared and it hadn't gone away. And frankly, that time has come and it needs to be cleaned up. So the first action that I'd like to take, because we have not done this formally as a full council, I would, I would move that we accept and endorse the letter that Mr. DeMora wrote to the applicant stating that their project does not meet the contract that was inked in 2013.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for clarification. Everyone understands the motion. Do you have more comments that you'd like to add as the person who put it on the agenda? Mr. Glasson?
Not, not on that motion.
Okay, so, so to, to be clear, then the motion is to accept the letter, um, sent by Mr. DeMora.
And, and I'll just say, I'm sorry, it's, it's a matter of formality. It was not done, and it goes a long way, in my most humble opinion, in cleaning things up, checking that box, that we did authorize him to do it, and we're now formally addressing that matter, which will further cement where I'm going with my next motion.
Thank you very much. Our motion is second. Uh, Mr. Santos, did you have a comment?
Uh, I have a few comments. Madam Mayor, I just kind of take you by surprise a little bit. We all knew he sent the letter, we were all good with the letter. Um, I'm just a little, little concerned, um, because I, I had to think about it a second, I wasn't, I wasn't ready for this, to talk about his letter. I mean, I agreed with this letter, we all agree with this letter, but I just wanted to make sure that this doesn't somehow paint us in a corner legally. David, I'll have to ask you, is, is, is the attorney for the town, are you okay with us doing this?
Yes, I have issues with the written letter. It's a representation of the council. It sounds good.
Okay. Okay.
He said that he's fine with us, uh, accepting the motion as it stands. He doesn't see, attorney doesn't see any legal ramifications.
Right, it's a representation of the town's position.
Representation, representing the town's position.
Madam Mayor, are you willing to hear from the public?
No, sir, it's not, no, sir, it's not time for, it's not time for public comment. I, I hear you though. Um, because it's.
You got to want to hear from the people.
That's order.
You're hearing matters affecting Shen Creek now, and we'd like to be heard before you do that, whether it's a matter of formality by Mr. Glasson and Mrs. O'Grady, the two leading advocates, we're going to vote for putting it on.
There will be time for public comment. If you've signed up on this issue, there is time for public comment. I have a councilman who'd like to make some comments. Mr. Nichols?
Yeah. Uh, the letter that was written by the town administrator is, is there a copy of that that can be put up on, on the screen tonight, or do we have that handy?
Okay.
Right, and I had it back in October, I get that. Uh, my only question is that, how to put this? Seems intuitively correct, although I'm making a curiosity, Mr. Carrier, whether we need to receive legal advice, whether there is a legal ramification of an affirmation by the council that letter was or not. I don't know whether you'd see that publicly.
Order, sir. Everyone else in here, this is very important. Please hold your applause.
Is that something that we would have to discuss, probably in executive session or?
That's council's discretion as to whether to discuss it, but typically legal advice that relates to contracts by state statute and by our ordinances is an executive session matter.
Your honor, um.
Are you someone out there who have access to this letter?
Yeah, I do, right here.
Order, please, we have the letter, we've had the letter since October.
We, we.
We have it.
Well, by, as a point of order, I would like some legal advice about that motion at some point before we, uh, vote on it, and I would, uh, therefore request an adjournment. It won't be long into executive session. It may be 10 seconds or it may be 10 minutes, because I just want to make sure that I, I'm not sure I fully understand the ramifications of adopting it formally as a council. At least I don't.
Mr. Nichols, we appreciate that.
I think that's second. You miss motion?
Yeah, that's a point of order.
We are very much trying to do this in the public arena. We certainly appreciate your comment. Um, I have a first motion and a second on the table. So, order, and I have more comments on that. And now with the second motion.
All right, the motion right now is during the comment period to go into executive session. The motion should be handled.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Um, I have a line of order of discussion. Mr. Smith?
Madam Mayor, I will not be voting in favor of the executive session. This is too delicate and tender of an item for us to be going into executive session. Let's talk the town's business in front of the townspeople.
Thank you all.
You know, had we known that, that this was going to come up with council, then, then probably you were right, but this is kind of a surprise for me, and I didn't realize that. Apparently some people knew about this, and I'd like to make sure.
Thank you, order again. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. I will call for the vote. We have a roll call, please. This is a motion to go into executive session. It's for a voting. Mr. Carrier?
No.
Mr. Garage?
No.
Mr. Glass?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
No.
Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Smith Marshall?
No.
Mayor Page? No. And the no's careful. So we have the first motion on the table and a second to accept the letter written by the town administrator. Uh, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Nichols?
Thank you, Madam. Um, I'm not. Help me understand what accepting the letter as the council, uh, means. Are we just formally stating a position that has already been published on the internet in the sense of developer under our town administrator's signature?
I'll turn it over to Mr. Arch. You made the motion.
Thank you. A- as stated, this was generated by a full council. The contract was signed and approved by a full council with a directive to the administrator using one that would interpret the application and make a determination by the council whether it met the requirements of the contractor. The administrator received the application, deemed it not meeting the contract, and therefore wrote a letter and sent us a copy. I, out of the fact, to help where I'm going with this, make sure we all understand, and simply saying that we've never taken any formal public action as a body that engaged this to start with, whether you are here or not, to say, we do approve of that because we're all in this and we're, we're accepting buy-in, because we set the buy-in on the front end, we're going to buy in, we're closing.
Thank you very much. Um, discussion, Mr. Nichols?
Eric, did you write that letter of your own accord to go off consulting council? Who directed you to write that letter?
I just stated.
Yeah, it was, it was discussion at the council level to, um, to examine the project that was submitted and determine whether there was sufficient number of spaces to meet the public funding requirement. And the letter, to sum it up, says that there were, there are not sufficient spaces.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second.
Call the question.
Call the question. Roll call, please.
State the question.
The, the question is a motion to approve the letter as written by the town administrator in October.
Which is where this has always been, by the way. It hasn't been on a committee level. And that's why it's here again tonight. It's back with our full council because it's that important and it needs to be. By the direction of this council, it was understood that Mr. DeMora would review the project, as he did, and he deemed that it did not have the parking spots required to meet the contract that was inked in October of 2013. Therefore, he submitted a letter and sent it to the applicant. So what's happened since then, after these fourteen, fifteen months? I said something to Eric the other day. This has been like an unfortunate dangling chad. It hadn't been clear and it hadn't gone away. And frankly, that time has come and it needs to be cleaned up. So the first action that I'd like to take, because we have not done this formally as a full council, I would move that we accept and endorse the letter that Mr. DeMora wrote to the applicant stating that their project does not meet the contract that was inked in 2013.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for clarification. Everyone understands the motion. Do you have more comments that you'd like to add as the person who put it on the agenda?
Not on that motion.
Okay, so to be clear, then the motion is to accept the letter sent by Mr. DeMora.
And I'll just say, I'm sorry, it's a matter of formality. It was not done and it goes a long way, in my most humble opinion, in cleaning things up and checking that box that we did authorize him to do it. And we're now formally addressing that matter, which will further cement where I'm going with my next motion.
Thank you very much. Our motion is second. Mr. Santos, did you have a comment?
I have a few comments. Madam Mayor, I just kind of take you by surprise a little bit. We all knew he sent the letter and we're all good with the letter. I'm just a little concerned because I had to think about his second, but I wasn't ready for this, to talk about his letter. I agreed with his letter, we all agree with his letter, but I just wanted to make sure that this doesn't somehow paint us in a corner legally. David, I'll have to ask you, is the attorney for the town, are you okay with us doing this?
The issue is that you're writing a letter, it's a representation, it sounds good.
Okay.
He said that he's fine with us accepting the motion as it stands. The attorney doesn't see any legal ramifications.
Right, it's a representation of the town's position.
Representation, representing the town's position.
Madam Mayor, are you willing to hear from the public?
No, sir, it's not time for public comment. I hear you though. Because it's...
You don't want to hear from the county?
That's order.
You're hearing matters affecting Shem Creek now, and we'd like to be heard before you do that. Whether it's a matter of formality by Mr. Glass and Mrs. Albridge, the two leading advocates for this, we're putting it on.
There will be time for public comment. If you've signed up on this issue, there is time for public comment. I have a councilman who'd like to make some comments. Mr. Nichols?
The letter that was written by the town administrator, is there a copy of that that can be put up on the screen tonight? Do we have that handy? Okay. Right, and I had it back in October, I get that. My only question is that, how to put this? Seems intuitively correct, although I'm making a curiosity, Mr. Cattell, whether we need to receive legal advice, whether there is a legal ramification of an affirmation by the council that letter passed or not. I don't know whether you can do that publicly?
Order. Everyone has to hear, this is very important, please hold your applause.
Is that something that we would have to discuss, probably in executive session?
That's council's discretion as to whether to discuss it, but typically legal advice that relates to contracts by state statute and by our ordinances is an executive session matter. Your honor?
Do you know anyone out there have access to this letter?
Yeah, I got it right here.
Order, please, we have the letter, we've had the letter since October.
As a point of order, I would like to some legal advice about that motion at some point before we vote on it. And I would therefore request an adjournment. It won't be long into executive session, maybe ten seconds or maybe ten minutes, because I just want to make sure that I'm not sure I fully understand the ramifications of adopting it formally as a council. At least I don't.
Mr. Nichols, we appreciate that.
I think that's second. You miss motion?
That's a point of order.
We are very much trying to do this in the public arena. We certainly appreciate your coming. I have a first motion and a second on the table. So point of order, and I have more comments on that. And now with the second motion.
All right, the motion right now is during the comment period to go into executive session. The motion should be handled.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. I have a line of order of discussion. Mr. Smith?
Madam Mayor, I will not be voting in favor of the executive session. This is too delicate and tender of an item for us to be going into executive session. Let's talk the town's business in front of the townspeople.
Thank you.
You know, had we known that this was going to come up, the council, then probably you were right. But this is kind of a surprise for me, and I didn't realize that. Apparently, some people knew about this. And I'd like to make sure that my attorney is right there.
Thank you. Order again. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. I will call for the vote. We have a roll call, please. This is a motion to go into executive session. It's for a voting. Mr. Carrier?
No.
Mr. Garage?
No.
Mr. Glass?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
No.
Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Marshal?
No.
Mayor Cage? No. And the no's careful. So we have the first motion on the table and a second to accept the letter written by the town administrator. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Nichols?
Thank you, ma'am. Help me understand what accepting the letter as the council means. Are we just formally stating a position that has already been published on the internet in the sense of developer under our town administrator's signature?
I'll turn it over to Mr. Garage, who made the motion.
Thank you. As stated, this was generated by a full council. The contract was signed and approved by a full council with a directive to the administrator using one that would interpret the application and make a determination by the council whether it met the requirements of the contractor. The administrator received the application, deemed it not meeting the contract, and therefore wrote a letter and sent us a copy. I, out of the fact, to help where I'm going with this, make sure we all understand, and simply saying that we've never taken any formal public action as a body that engaged this to start with, whether you are here or not, to say, "We do approve of that because we're all in this and we're accepting buy-in because we set the buy-in on the front end, we're going to buy in and close it."
Thank you very much. Discussion, Mr. Nichols?
Eric, did you write that letter of your own accord without consulting council? Or directly did you write that letter?
I just stated. Yeah, it was discussion at the council level to examine the project that was submitted and determine whether there was sufficient number of spaces to meet the public funding requirement. And the letter, to sum it up, says that there are not sufficient spaces.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second.
Call the question.
Call the question. Roll call, please.
State the question.
The question is a motion to approve the letter as written by the town administrator in October. Mr. Carrier?
Aye.
Mr. Garage?
Aye.
Mr. Glass?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Marshal?
Aye.
Mayor Cage? Yes, unanimous, motion passes.
Mayor Page?
Yes, sir.
To follow that and to continue discussion, now the applicant knows that he agreed with it, but he knows that he can't provide the numbers he needs that the town requires to build the project. So his natural process for him is to amend the process and submit something new, which has been going on, I don't know how many months, Mr. DeMora, it seems like it's been going on, what, seven, eight months? Anyway, for a period of time for the applicant to try and get to a point. It's real clear to me after every time I've looked at it, that it can't be achieved, it can't be done. So therefore, as far as the government being involved with the government's money to assist in this project, although I am all about a vision of doing everything I can to help and save and protect Shem Creek and enhance it, I am ready to put this to bed. Therefore, that second item up there, act to deny the new proposal, I am putting that in the form of a motion to deny the new proposal or any proposal submitted by the applicant second pertaining to this matter.
Thank you very much. Please keep order. I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to follow. We have time for public comment, sir. I'm following the agenda, I'm following Robert Moore's board. Yes, sir.
Please excuse me, Madam Mayor, this is my last statement. Would you consider the public comments prior to the time that you vote on everything that we're here to comment upon? Because that's what Paul Gorge has just asked you to do, to end the matter by vote now.
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking for, sir. Do you want us to vote to end the matter or do you want to talk about voting to end the matter?
Well, I was hoping that you would hear the public before you pass these by the votes, which would result in ending the matter. That's what he's asked you to do, not to consider them.
Yes, sir, we have, for a point of order, we have a sign-up sheet. You had a chance to sign up. I will certainly take all public comments. This is the council's time. There is a motion on the table. There stands a second. I believe I have some hands that were asked for discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Glass?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, fellow council members, and citizens. I appreciate all the comments that you made, Mr. Garage. And if it wasn't clear, a vote on the motion that was made will end any public dollars going into an office building that has parking spaces, period, by this body, not on a $30,000 level, not on 168, 163, or 185. It'll be zero public dollars. We had a retreat about a week ago, week and a half ago, two weeks ago, now this is Tuesday. And in that, we had a pastor from a local church talk about leadership. And I think it affects to some of the comments that have been made and some of the comments that were made this week. And in that, he talked of a book that he and his Bible study were reading, and it was mirrored by the comments that the pastor, Mike, spoke today. He spoke of leadership and building trust and integrity, embracing accountability with one another for a common goal, to honor the people, to honor the process, and to honor each other. For those of you that don't have my email address or my phone number, like the mayor has, I try to answer all 332 emails personally. I don't have anyone do it. Any council member has the ability to pick up the phone, call me, email me, tell the town administrator, put it in the newspaper, you can get ahold of me. It should not be difficult. And I humbly ask that in the future, when an item is placed on the agenda, that those council members, if they have a question on it, on where the integrity and the decisions lie for that decision, that they would pick up the phone and do so. It's sad to see the misleading bashing that goes on, and I don't care about me, I served in the Marine Corps and got shot out of combat, I couldn't care less. However, it's sad to see, and I disagree, that the mutual respect that doesn't exist. We brought this to the table so we could end this and put a permanent nail in what has been fought over for the last two and a half years. And if the residents ask if we're listening, I don't see how much more we could listen than we're not going to be part of it. And I would ask for that consideration from all the council members as we move forward. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And for Mr. Santos?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to point out, and I think maybe this is why some of the audience there is just a little bit hesitant, a little bit... Not long ago, my colleague, Mr. Glass, wrote half a page in the newspaper about me taking items directly to council without going first to committee. We didn't find out, I didn't find out till Friday that this was going to be on our agenda. We did not go to committee, as he preached, and so we didn't know what was going on. I had no idea what was going on. All of a sudden, it appeared on the committee, and I'm sure a lot of the audience is the same way. They all of a sudden heard about it and was like... Understandably, I understand why they're concerned, because clearly, I thought we decided back then they would go to committee first, where they would have an opportunity to come and be a part of that, and then would come to council. But apparently, that didn't work with this. It appeared on the agenda, and I think everybody got concerned about that. They didn't know what was going on, they didn't know what was going to happen. Apparently, folks heard what was going to happen because clearly, it sounded like it was all rehearsed and everybody knew what they were going to say. I didn't know, and they didn't know. So you can't blame them for being concerned about it when we decide that we're going to go through committee on these issues, and then all of a sudden, it appears on council out of the blue and in the last minute. So I understand why they're concerned and I agree with them. I'm concerned myself. That's why I was hesitant at the very beginning to approve the letter, although I know Eric did an excellent job on the letter, and I agree with it, but I was caught off guard. And I think they were caught off guard as well, and I think that's why you see the hesitation. Thank you.
Please hold your applause. Please hold your applause. We're trying to do important council business here. And Mr. Santos, I appreciate that, but you know, I feel some of my council members have had the same feelings about some items that you've put on the agenda. They did... No, 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 I'm not calling Mr. Santos out. We are all in.
Eric, wouldn't you be here now?
I'm glad you're here, sir. I'm glad you're all here. This is engaged good governance. I'm glad you're all here.
Call the question.
Roll call, please. Mr. Carrier?
Aye.
Mr. Garage?
Aye.
Mr. Glass?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Marshal?
Aye.
Mayor Cage? Yes, unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to planning business, I think we... That's fine. Do we know who's signed up to take up this issue? If you're signed up to speak on the issues, do you want to take the gross first?
Yes, ma'am, you're happy to.
We'll take the groves closures first if you're here to speak on that issue. I will remind you of the protocol. We will ask you to come forward. We will ask you to state your name and address for the record, and we will time you to two minutes. And we're going to call it two at a time, so if you'll be kind of queued and ready to go, that'd be great.
And yes, Mayor, some individuals may have left on this issue, so this can't go on one after another. David Yount and Jim Carson?
I know Mr. Carson left.
Mr. Carson left. Mr. Yount, are you here, sir?
If you're here to speak on it, and you signed up, would you please raise your hand? Okay, if y'all just come in line up, we'll get you called up. This is on the closure. Anyone that's here to speak on the closure and the groves.
We have a lot of people that want to make their voices heard, and we want to make sure everyone has that opportunity.
My name is Barry Wolf. I live at 1468 Pocahontas in the Indian Village. I'd like to state my objection to the closing off the groves. From the minutes of the Transportation Committee meeting of February 2nd, it was estimated that the groves would generate 2,000 trips a day. Those 2,000 trips a day will now go out to Coleman Boulevard without the access to get out towards Johnny Dodds. Between everything we have planned, everything that's already been approved, all of the things that are set to be approved, you're looking at 800 to 1,000 at least more housing units in the Coleman corridor. The traffic studies that we did in 2011, or we did today, has no way of planning for that. Streets connect streets. I live in Old Mount Pleasant. McCants and Center are connected by Fairmont and Royal. It's been a connection to rifle range forever. Close the groves, push the traffic over to Cooper Estates, close Cooper Estates. We get tired of the traffic in the old village, we're going to ask you to close the old village. It's Pandora's Box. You can't do it. Thank you.
Hold out, y'all, hold your applause until the end. I know you want to support these folks, and we appreciate them coming. Just want to make sure everybody has their time.
I'm Mike, excuse me, Mike Reynolds. I live at 1025 Lansing Drive in the Groves. I've been there for 24 years. Spent my first 12 years on Tall Pine Road. Of course, when I bought my current home at the corner of Lansing and Japonica, there was no Whole Foods, there was no Trader Joe's. To, you know, the comment the gentleman just made, I would say that is not really between the two major thoroughfares that we had in Mount Pleasant, Coleman Boulevard and Johnny Dodds. As part of the group that's volunteered to spearhead this effort, the one thing that I would say is we try to consider our own neighbors within the groves, and I think your comments earlier that we need to solve it for both communities is warranted. I'd say close off Cottingham on the frontage and give us both our neighborhoods. I heard somebody tonight say that we really don't have a neighborhood. We are four streets that people cut through every day. I know Brad Morrison's number shows about 42% of it is cut through, and all we're asking is that we have our neighborhood as our community. We welcome anybody to pass through there at any time, to come in and go out the way we come in and go out, like a creekside, a hearing point, or anybody else.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Mary Stewart Murphy, and I am a resident of the groves since 1984. I live on Lakeview, which has not impacted as much as Lansing. However, we've been discussing this issue since Dot Kearns was on the county council, if anybody remembers her. And we've tried to preserve the groves, and what has happened is the growth has outgrown our neighborhood, and consequently, we're the cut from the neighborhood. And I think everybody knows that I don't have the solution. I'm not, I don't care whether we close Coleman Side or we close 17 Side, but somehow, we've got to stop the through traffic in our neighborhood, and I would appeal to the council to help us do that. Our committee has certainly done a great job, but please consider the cause of the groves and on Cottingham as well.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart.
My name is Carol Bischof. My father-in-law is Richard Bischof Sr., Dick, 1022 West Lakewood Drive. He's 95 years of age, built his home in the groves 50 years ago. He raised his family here. The entire family still lives in Mount Pleasant, and we are all registered voters. We are very disappointed Dick was not given the simple courtesy of being included in the original survey or given the data collected and the opportunity to voice his thoughts and opinions on this very important change in the neighborhood. He is not in favor of blockage to the neighborhood. There are other alternatives that could, less intrusive alternatives that could be tried first. Because of this, I actually questioned the method in which the survey was conducted. Other residents were also not informed, and one resident told me, the survey taker said, "Almost everyone is voting in favor of this proposal," and because of this comment, this person voted in favor of it also. So I asked town council not to make this decision right away, but to move forward with public hearings so all those involved have the opportunity to be heard, and perhaps a less intrusive method rather than closing could be considered.
Thank you, Ms. Bischof.
My name is Jim Algar. I live at 977 Tall Pine in the Groves. My point here is to, the groves was initially designed, for those of you that don't know, Lansing went all the way across over to Mathis Ferry. Through the years, it was decided that we needed a major highway to come through and cut Lansing. I grew up on Lansing. My parents' house is still there. If you've ridden down Lansing, there's two stop signs on there. My mom demanded that we put stop signs on here. People are coming down here way too fast, way too fast. That was 20 years ago. I live in that neighborhood now. What I've seen grow up since then, now we have these big businesses, that what is a shortcut? It's a, I won't do the right thing, I'll do the easy thing. Now, Mount Pleasant, the tricenter area is growing, there is something, perhaps you've heard of it, called the internet. Everyone knows about this place, and we are going to deal with more people than any of us can imagine. This neighborhood was not designed to have people driving through. Houston North Cut was designed for that reason. That's what it's for, that's what we can widen. Are we going to widen the street into these people's homes because we need a turn lane? Because people are trying to get around? My wife was out with our children in the road, and she took a cone and she set it out in the middle of the road. And I said, "You can't." But who am I going to tell the mother of my children what she can do to keep her children safe? My point is, is that it wasn't designed for this. This is not the failsafe to make it work. More people are coming, another business is coming, the business corridor is going to funnel right through because that's the shortcut, that's the easiest way to do things. We don't need to do it the easiest way, we need to do it the right way, because this population, as the gentleman said, as far as village is concerned, all of these things are true, but one difference is, is that you cut through. You can go make your angle if you'd like, but that's a longer distance. This is a cut through, and you've got four different streets, and each one has its own level. Lansing is the number one, everyone knows about it.
Thank you, Mr. Algar. Unfortunately, that's your two minutes.
All right, sir, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, my name is Tom Keggy. I live on 980 Lansing Speedway. I'm going to give you some basketball legs. Thanks to the Transportation Department, the mayor, and the council for allowing this opportunity to go forward with this plan, safety and developing of our neighborhood. It will change our lives in the groves, period, and probably save a few. The last thing that we had here, which was not a full council meeting, but it was a discussion about this, we were walking home, there was a car that ran around, a car that was stopped at the stop sign on Lansing Drive. Had we not been there, had we been there earlier, poor people died. And that car did the same thing at the next stop line. So it's getting ridiculous, we all know that. For those that are uncertain about the plan, its changes and its inconvenience, we all share, we all will share. You need to understand things have already changed. Done deal, and the inconvenience of the traffic will only get worse. If we don't at least try this plan, we will forever be part of a traffic pattern that exists today. We will always be that pattern, okay? And more and more people, as they find out about it, are going to use it, and it will be even more inconvenient. It's already hard to get out on the frontage roads as it is now. I think we can agree on that. Can you wait till all these businesses are on there now and see how hard it is going to get out of frontage road? With this plan, yes, we will need to enter from Lansing and Cliffwood, but we remember, it will just be us again. It won't be this 2,000 car count that I just heard here before, because there are 2,000 others that are going to do that. It'll just be us using that road. This plan addresses a very important point. If any of our roads are open to the frontage road, then the traffic will simply find its way... way through, much like water seeking its level.
Thank you, Tom. That's your two, I'm sorry. I'm fair-spare, I apologize. Ms. Bischoff?
Mayor, council, you know my dad, Richard Bischoff, area's known as also Sound Line, 95 years old. Mom just passed away, so we're going to look at possibly moving in with him to help him. He's totally against this, and is, he is up on current events and participates as much as he can. He thinks that the unintended consequences that he's seen with the Boulevard, he rides by the Boulevard and we take him to doctor appointment for physical therapy, and he sees the Boulevard, and he reads about the cars parked down in other people's neighborhoods. And he said, "You gotta think things through." Unintended consequences, it's a nice neighborhood, there is traffic, not everybody leaves at 8:00 in the morning in the Groves, goes to work and comes back at 5:00 in the evening. So there is some traffic coming through there, but I think there's other issues, other, other things that can be done. Sidewalks, perhaps, some sort of road warning, crosswalks, something of that nature, I think could help with the sloth, sloth of traffic. I don't think closing it off, you're gonna have people going over to North Cut, you have people going up Cottingham. I just think it's, it's, it's a really difficult thing, but I don't think you'll look at everything through, and I think, I think that's probably best.
Thank you very much.
Gary Ockerman, 979 Lansing Drive.
Hello, Gary.
Howdy. About two years ago, I had the opportunity to start working with the Groves leadership group, and one of the first things I inherited, I guess, our new group inherited, was the cut through issue in the Groves. So we started and worked, it's already been started, with the traffic, or the transportation department, and I found they're a small department with excellent skills. They have helped us, they never told us what to do, and for two years, we finally in September came up with a plan. There was a Plan A through F. We took Plan F and modified it, which was to close the streets on the, on the bypass side. It was very aggressive. We had no idea what would happen. We set up a survey with anywhere from 10 to 15 people over a month, sometimes going to homes two, three, or four times, and documented every house we went to. Is, was it perfect? Well, we, we tried. We thought maybe we would get a majority, 51%, maybe, like a political landslide, 60%. We didn't get 70, we didn't get 80, we get 90%. Now, as a statistician, I will tell you, I'll take the 90% and I'll just stop a minute and say, if it was 80% or if it was 70% or if it was 60%, the huge bracket is still called a landslide. And what that means to me is a need to do something about it. And that's why I just wanted to speak on the survey process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ockerman. You're up.
Hello, town members. My name's Carol Lewis, and I live in Cooper Estates. I live at 1026 Coming Circle. And I completely agree with those who live in the Groves, and I was very relieved to hear that we, our town and the councilmen voted to take it from, and leave it to the cleaning, excuse me, Transportation Department. Now, I agree there's a problem. The Groves has a big issue. Well, so does Cooper Estates, and by closing just the Groves, it's going to negatively impact Cooper Estates. A little over a year ago, my son was hit by a car going too fast on Cottingham, and he was just trying to go to the boat landing. He was 14, he was on the edge of the road, he wasn't even bicycling. But these cars in such a hurry that we see on a daily basis, couldn't wait for another car passing to go around him, so his wide mirror knocked him off, face planted, surgery, dental surgeries, broken collarbone. Now, how many lives does it cost to slow down the traffic in a neighborhood with a speed limit of 25? I see it every day. They run the stop signs at 40, 50 miles an hour, and my neighbor got hit walking her dog. It's enough, folks. We've got to come together as a community to resolve this, and that's what I ask.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
I live at 1025 Cliffwood Drive. I wanted to thank you for supporting my neighborhood. I know that there has been a person, a point of contact, even if it's not an HOA, a point of contact person has talked to council, and it's my understanding that the issue of speed bumps has been brought up, and the town, for whatever reason, hasn't been very receptive to that. So the Transportation Committee came up with this road closure idea. If this, if this situation where the cut through traffic occurred where you live, you would be wanting the same as us. The cut through traffic affects our safety and quality as a neighborhood. I was going to reference that car speeding through the neighborhood, I saw it that night, and this happens more often than you want to believe. It happens on all the streets in our neighborhood, and trucks, whether they're late for appointments or they're just bad drivers blast through the neighborhood also. I've seen this all going down Cliffwood Drive. Picture all of this going on right past your house. How would you react to it? We are a cohesive, quality neighborhood that wishes to maintain our safety. I support the road closures, and I ask you to also.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, council, my name's Matt Nowon, 927 Lansing Drive. Thank you all for all the work you've done so far, Brad and his group. I wanted to talk a little bit about the survey. I think in the online things I've seen, there may be a little bit of confusion. I think it's important to address it. As part of the survey group, we spent thousands of hours taking a piece of paper to our neighbors and saying, "This is what, this is the proposal, sign yes or no." We took comments saying whether, if they were against it, what they said. Gary had that book, you guys may or may not have seen that book, it's in there. We are not survey folks, we don't do this every day, is there a little margin of error, possibly? We have, you may or may not have seen this in your packet for tonight. This was, the green is the yes, the white is they weren't contacted, not because we didn't try, it's in those, it's because they didn't answer. And we, our volunteer organization did this, we only have so many hours in the day to go back. So we tried, sometimes multiple times. The blue was a no. So, so if you look at the two, out of the 228 homes, we contacted 170. 90% of those 170 said yes. 10% of those 17 people said no. There was, the rest of the group was not survey. We heard those comments tonight. It wasn't because we didn't try, it's because they didn't answer. We, we have worked very hard for, since 2010 on this. We recognize Cooper Estates has a problem. We'd love to see y'all come together and fix both, and we welcome the interaction. We do have an organized group, we've seen that tonight, so we hope that Cooper Estates will get it and will work with y'all to solve it.
Thank you very much.
My name is Donna German. We've owned our home in the Groves at 1020 Tall Pine Road since 1985, and we were actually on the committee that was involved with getting stop signs back about 20 years ago. So this has been a neighbor, this has been an issue in our neighborhood for well over 20 years. I think it was really summed up today when ABC News released a statement about this meeting tonight, saying that the town was getting ready to close four major throughways from Coleman to Johnny Dodds. Now, I would like to say that Houston North Cut is a major throughway, our neighborhood streets are not. We had a dog hit and killed while my husband was out walking early one morning. It was two teenage girls speeding through the neighborhood, cutting through, trying to get to school. It's going to be a child next. I don't want their blood on my shoulders. Let's close the roads. The neighbors, the neighborhood has worked together, we've had volunteers working for years, solving, trying to solve, propose, you know, speed bumps, closing off one road and just move it, all the traffic to another. People have put a lot of time and effort into this, they've come up with a solution. I think that we need to support them.
Hello, my name is Amy Durant, 1060 Groves Mayor Court. Thank you again to council for giving us this opportunity and to Brad and Gary, and the Transportation Subcommittee for allowing us to bring this to you. As many of you have heard, we're, we have many anecdotes of children having to dodge cars, runners having to dodge trucks. We are a thoroughfare, unfortunately. I can tell you that I've had drivers literally drive into my front yard in an effort to reach Coleman Boulevard from Johnny Dodds in a hurry, where my children exit the bus stop among approximately 12 other kids. It is more than needing to mitigate traffic, we have to eliminate this traffic. Speed bumps, other suggestions that the traffic engineers have thankfully come up with are helpful, but the only way to address this problem is to completely eliminate it. Whether or not it's closing Frontage Road, whether or not it's closing Coleman Boulevard exits and entries, we have seven ways to get in and out of our neighborhood of 228 homes. Compare that to other neighborhoods in town, it's truly impossible, and I thank you for your consideration and hope that we can come to a resolution quickly.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for this opportunity. My name's Randy Brown, and I live on Lansing Drive on the corner of Lansing and Shannon, with my wife Kay and our dog Ellie. We don't have any children. We love convenience. Personally, yeah, I'd love being able to go wherever I want to go, but I'm, I'm in favor of closing the roads on the frontage roadside and being a little bit inconvenienced. Why? Because it's the right thing to do. The Groves is a, is a gem of a neighborhood, and, you know, all we're asking for is the same thing that all these new high-density communities are getting. One way in and one way out, safe streets, a place where you don't have to worry about someone blowing through a traffic light while they're texting, people just doing stupid things. I see it all the time, I'm working in my yard, I see people blow through the stop sign, I've called the police. Police have been very helpful, they've actually come out, camped out right at my intersection, and, and I'll sit there and watch, drinking my coffee on a Saturday morning, and bam, they'll, they'll pull someone within about 20 minutes. So, anyway, I made my point, thank you for listening.
Thank you for listening to all of us. Jeff Dennison, 926 Lansing. I've taken notes as we've gone along. I think going back to committee was an excellent decision. Thank you. One thing that I, people speed, we ride our bikes in there all the time. Speed enforcement will deter traffic. A few more stop signs is probably a very good idea, but when you do speed enforcement, you get the local people who ask for it, then complaining that the cops wrote them a ticket. Don't speed in your own neighborhood, because I'll guarantee you that all the speeders aren't cut throughs. And the cops are doing their job and they're being your friend. Speed humps will work. A couple extra stop signs, blocking off a public road, paid for with tax dollars, oh, it's going to make everybody have to drive past the few houses on the couple streets that are left. Your traffic's going to go up fourfold, because everyone will be going by your house at 4:00 in the morning on the way to work. Let's see. If you're going to end up deciding ultimately to block some things, do it with temporary concrete barriers first to get an assessment of what the people really think, because then they might say, "Oh, my God, this is not what we wanted." I think that's probably enough. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, I appreciate you letting me come up here tonight. My name's Mike Evans, and I live at 903 Cliffwood Drive. I am one of the four houses on the front of Brooklyn. It appalls me that for four years, this has gone on, and nobody from the town, the Planning Committee, nor this, quote, Civic Neighborhood Association, has knocked on my door. It's wrong.
Thank you, Mike. Is she the last for the Groves? Is anyone else for the Groves? Thank you. The Groves aren't, yeah, with the Groves closure, but that's, they did the issue. If y'all just line up and be ready.
Hey, y'all, my name is Margaret Ann Michaels, and I live at 1511 Ben Sawyer Boulevard. I live on the corner of Ben Sawyer and Central Drive, so talk about traffic at 4:00 in the morning, I live with that, too. If Bowman to Houston, to Houston, New, to North Cut is too far for the public to go without another cut through between Coleman Boulevard and Highway 17, and the driving public has determined that they need another way through, then we need to think about That's how Houston North Cut became a major thoroughfare, was probably a path when it first started out, and then a dirt road, and then a one-lane paved road, and then a two-lane paved road, and then it became what it is now. That's how Bowman Road became what it is, between Coleman Boulevard and Mathis Ferry. That's how roads become roads. But if we're going to decide that we're going to put the needs and the priorities of the neighbors who live in those neighborhoods over the needs and priorities of the driving public, which I think we should do, then we have to make it so those shortcuts aren't shortcuts. It's very simple. My boyfriend's the one who showed me that way through, and believe me, he's not going 25 miles an hour. I am, he's not, and I get on him about it all the time, and everybody else that goes that way. But it's really simple. If it's not a shorter way through, people are not going to use it. Make it so it takes more time. That's all it is. They'll go to Bowman, and they'll go to Houston North Cut, because they want to keep going 45 miles an hour, which is too fast to be going through there anyway. The whole town should be at 35 miles an hour, but if you put up more crosswalks, you put up more four-way stop signs, you put in bigger, higher speed bumps that are going to hurt their cars if they go over, over 25 miles an hour, if you put in more police stops and you ticket the people who are going through and going over five miles over the speed limit, they won't do it anymore because it'll take more time and it'll be inconvenient.
Thank you, Ann. That's your two minutes.
Good evening, my name's Mary McManus. I live 1004 Lansing Drive. I was born there. The only thing I've got to say is Saturday, come, come sit in my yard. Any Saturday, any Sunday. Forty-three cars in less than three minutes. My 90-year-old father walks with a walker, he's almost been hit. Do something, do your job.
My name's Bryce Weskey. I live at 10621 Cottingham. Thank you, council, mayor, for letting me speak. I've been up here before, I've spoken a few years ago, I've worked with folks in council, Brad in trafficking, Gary, and, you know, everybody's affected by cut through traffic in both the Groves and Cooper Estates. Is closing the roads the right answer? I don't know. You know, that's, that's one to be left to, you know, to come up with an apprehensive plan for both neighborhoods. Pitting one against the other is not the right answer, because, you know, I live on Cottingham, 3,800 cars a day go by my house. Do I want another 2,000 that are going to be, that go through the Groves currently going by my house? Absolutely not. So, it has to be a cohesive, cohesive So, it has to be a cohesive, comprehensive plan between both neighborhoods, not just the Groves versus Cooper States. So, I would ask that, you know, council and the folks on the Transportation Committee, we can come up with something that resolves the cut-through traffic issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce.
Dave Browning, 905 Surrock Court, Cooper States. One of the rest's names. He bought on Cottingham. I didn't, and a bunch of the other people, and they would did. It's a known thoroughfare. When you bought that house, you knew that. Closing down public roads in Mount Pleasant, I don't know if you guys wanna get in the business of that. That's four public roads in a public neighborhood. Just think about it. And I'm not just talking about Cooper States and Groves. The whole town is involved in this. It's their taxpayers' money that's gonna be putting these things in. So, I don't know if you've heard from just Cooper States. I seriously think, dealt it. You've just heard from Cooper States and the Groves in the last four days. I think you've heard from other people also. It's our tax money, and that's four lanes. There's a lot of traffic in this town. Closing roads off isn't a great way to deal with it. I sympathize with the Groves. There is some problems, but there's areas of the Groves that there's not that much traffic. There's some roads, and it's bad, but, you know, closing down public roads, that's bad. So, please think about it. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it for that issue, amended issue. Is there anyone else signed up on the sign-up sheets to speak tonight on any of the other issues? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone who has signed up to speak, yes. Again, for the sake of time, I would ask you to hold your applause, and I'd ask you each to realize that I am going to hold you to two minutes, and you state your name and address for the, so you?
My name is Jennifer Boebe. I live at 1109 Coleman Water Court, right off of Rockland Range Road. I came tonight to speak about the proposed Shem Creek parking garage. I would like to thank council and the mayor for having the wisdom, finally, to vote not to allow any other amendments to pass. I believe that that would not have been possible without the hard work of Jimmy Bagwell and Mr. Santos. He is the one member of council that I have seen taking the time to really listen to what his constituents have been saying and asking to happen. I have to say, I am disappointed that there are people that took campaign contributions from this developer and then voted in favor of doing him a favor in return, because it certainly looks like quid pro quo. And I would also remind you, each and every vote that you may have taken on this issue is a matter of public record, and anyone who voted at any time to support putting a monstrosity of a parking garage in a beautiful area can certainly count on never getting my vote again, and I am not. Thank you very much. This is a good city. I'd like to stay that way. Thank you very much.
Thanks. My name is Brad Doug Raftery. I live in Indian Village, and you have literally taken my breath away with the scam I've seen perpetrated here tonight by Paul Garitch and Ken Glasson, apparently, to resolve with that comment the issues we came here to speak about. And so, may I ask you and the attorney and Mr. Clausen, exactly what have you done tonight? I don't understand what you've done, and then I'll use my 30 seconds to comment on it.
It's public comment, sir. This is not time for the council to interact with you. This is your public comment. This is your time.
Okay. A couple of observations I've made. First, by Mr. Garitch, and what he usually does, and in the town administrator, saying that when we're gonna consider a matter where we might take something away from the development, and I'm talking about the Shem Creek parking garage, then it's a done deal, but it's a full mountain, and we can't do anything of it. But when we're gonna consider something to give the development more, we can always talk about it. We can have a variance and more and more discussion. Now, overall, let me just express to you, those of you, and you know who you are, my disdain for you, for violating this community, for bending us over and sodomizing us.
Order, sir! Order, sir! That's fine, sir. Your time is up. Thank you, sir. This is a public meeting. Please have respect. We are in council chambers.
Barry Wolf, 1468 Pocahontas Street. For fairness sake, I'll say I've been opposed to this garage from the word go. From what I understand, 30 feet of this project sits in the Shem Creek Water Lay overlay district. If I look at the zoning for that, that means basically there's a 10-foot setback from that, which means 40 feet of this building shouldn't exist, the way I look at it. I don't recall there's any zoning hearings. I don't recall any public hearings changing the zoning of this property. So, I would suggest that something's wrong with it to start out with. When the project first came up in 2013, it was announced, whether or not by design or not, as a request for a text amendment relative to a proposal on Coleman Boulevard at Coleman and Bill Street. I think if it had said a request to build a 55-foot-tall building with two floors of parking and 43,000 feet of office, I think you would have had a lot of outcry instead of the way it turned out.
My name is Charlotte Sala, and I live at 1619 Marsh Harbor Lane in Tollers Cove. I'm 16 years old, and I'm a junior in high school, and I'd like to start off with saying how beautiful Mount Pleasant is and how lucky I am to live here. A key thing that's important to understanding my generation is embracing the idea of change, and I'm not against that. But when you, so I want you to think about when you drive to work or take your kids to school, what do you see? Are there things here that have remained the same since you were little? Something commonly uttered around my house is the idea of just because you can doesn't mean you should, and I believe that that's extremely applicable here. Please consider the repercussions of your actions today and what you will be changing forever. There is a natural beauty surrounding where we live, so it's natural that more people would want to move here every day, but at some point, the charm will be lost. I speak for my friends and myself on this, so please let your good integrity be our legacy. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Don Muddler, 1881 West County Drive, Mason Borough.
Could you repeat your name one more time?
Yes, Don Muddler, 1881 West County Drive, in the Mason Borough section of Park West. I'd just like to change the focus from where we've been to the future development of Cambridge Square at Park West. When we moved, when we came down here in 2008, looking for a development to move into, we were very attracted to Park West. And one of the reasons, this brochure was presented to us in 2008, and it was based upon a 2006 development of Cambridge Square, which the town council had approved, was a modification of the 2000 original proposal for Cambridge Square. And it was this development that led us to choose to move into Park West. And I'd like to read some of the brochure to you.
I would just remind you that you have two minutes, so.
Cambridge Square has been called the finest example of traditional neighborhood design in the region. The roads are designed to protect the unique village atmosphere by controlling traffic flow and encouraging strolling and biking while embracing the environment. All that being said, when the new development comes before you, the new density development that they wanna put in instead, it in no way reflects what we poured into when we decided to move here to Park West in 2008.
Thank you very much.
My name is Frank Horton. I live on Old Village Drive. I want to say first, I appreciate everything that everyone up here does to further the interests of the town that we live in, and I appreciate when that's done. I've came here to talk about the garage, but while we're here, I continue reading things in news stories or other public forums that, well, you know, we've already had these densities, and we already have the zoning, so there's no way that we can change it. Everyone's coming. We can't change the zoning. I want to be very clear about this. That's not accurate. You absolutely can change the zoning. Unless you are going to deny all economically viable use of attractive land, you can absolutely change the zoning. I live, I drive on Coleman Boulevard. When we continue allowing these traffic counts, these multi-density areas of 2,000 to 3,000 more cars a day during peak traffic times, you're allowing more and more cars on Coleman Boulevard. You're allowing it in an area where you're allowing the Boulevard and other locations that are going to be built on Coleman, right on Coleman, right where there's only four lanes of traffic. And my question is, if we keep doing this, and you keep allowing more density, where are the cars gonna go? I drive there, and I think everyone up here does, too. I'm already waiting in traffic for 20 minutes. My question is, where are the cars going to go? Thank you.
Hello. Thanks for letting us speak. My name is Diana Dupuy. I live at 1927 Folling Creek Circle and also own a property in Seaside Farms. And I'm just here in general to say that, and it's come to my attention, that it seems that many council members and other members of the community seem to think that it tends to be the people who are born and raised and are now in retirement age that are the ones that are annoyed with the way that council is handling situations. That's not true at all. I am 36 years old. I have a circle of friends that are about 30 deep, of which many of them would like to be here tonight, but they're not able to be here. There are a lot of things that a lot of people are upset about with council. We moved to Mount Pleasant because we love Mount Pleasant. I have owned a property in Mount Pleasant for 10 years. I have lived in this area for 13 and a half years. I understand growth, but at some point, you have to decide where to use public dollars for the good. Why not use it to do feasibility studies and nature studies with the DNR and Army Corps of Engineers? Find a way to make development that actually has green space that allows predatory and ripotary animals to actually live and thrive in the same community next to you without encroaching us on them or them on us? Why not start to realize that what draws people here is the unique look of it? I'm originally from New Jersey. I went to high school in Sarasota, Florida. I went to school in Madison, Wisconsin. I lived in places that are concrete jungles. I moved here because it's not. I don't want it to become that. And when you change the whole landscape by putting a monstrosity of a parking garage that nobody wants, as well as communities like the Boulevard that you say hipsters, I've been at a meeting where one of the developers said that, wants to live, I can tell you right now, I represent the generation of hipsters that don't wanna live there. And the reason why the parking, where they live, which is why they don't want to do it, and they're parking on Coleman Boulevard at those spots, because they don't want to park in their parking garage. There's units that are vacant there. How many multiple-family, high-density units are we gonna make that are live and work that are vacant?
Humbert Carmichael, Perry Street. I am disappointed, just as a few people have just said. I'm disappointed, not total council, but most of the council. There are some people who stand up for names that have been mentioned. The council was entrusted to do the right thing, do a lot of the right buildings, and not the Boulevard, not garages, and not 70-story, well, not 70-story, 70-foot buildings. I believe that they're siding with developers, not with the population. Want to get extra time for the Coleman applause?
Yes, you do. There's place for their applause.
Thank you. I'll try and do it.
I asked them to hold their applause, but.
I just returned from California. I was here for five months for medical reasons, and everyone laughs at California. Well, I observed smaller cities like Lucadia and Solana Beach, Cardiff, and they kept their integrity. These houses, these coastal communities, have one- and two-story buildings, and they've kept integrity. That's something we haven't done here. To a degree, we have, yes, but we are going farther and farther astray. We just, we sold a bill of goods about urban sprawl. Okay, yeah, we're having it. They have it there, too. But after we build these large things, and then we have urban sprawl, then it's gonna really be good. Then you really have gridlock. San Diego County, what they do there, they insist on, before a building is put up, you have to put PVC pipes up, 20 feet, 40 feet, 60. Well, they don't go to 60. That's it. Like here, they have to go up to 55 feet, and then they string them together, showing you the breadth, the breadth, the building, so to speak. Do you think that if strings were attached, and people could actually see?
That's your two minutes.
Okay. If they could see what it was, they wouldn't allow it.
I would remind you that the clock is running, so I love your applause, and I know you wouldn't applaud them, but it does expend their time.
My name is Sarah Jacob. I live at 1152 Village Creek Lane, and I'm here to speak on behalf of affordable housing. I look at all of these people here, about a day of remembrance. We need to remember that not all of us have a lot of money. We need housing for seniors. We have seniors in this community who live on hard-earned social security. The average social security payment is $1,200 a month. How much rent do you think those people can pay at the Boulevard costs? We have teachers. We have policemen and policewomen. We have people who need homes in our community who are doing us a service. We have people who are taking care of the elderly and many of our elder communities here, who could not afford to live if we can't find a place, a way, to build some affordable housing in this community.
Greg Sidwell, 1721 James Bassford Place in Park West. Two points. Applaud your decision on the parking garage. I think it's the right decision. Primary interest mine, and I think a few other people in the audience, Cambridge Square, I urge council to disapprove that, based on the impact of traffic, and often heard theme tonight. That traffic will affect both Park West and the other environs across Highway 41, which is a traffic problem already. Furthermore, I recommend you disapprove it, based on the incompatibility of the proposal with the existing neighborhoods, in accordance with your own comprehensive plan. I recommend you disapprove it for the density of housing on the proposal and the overall degradation quality of life in beautiful Park West and Mount Pleasant. Thank you.
My name is Steve Gilder. I'm a recent addition to your lovely community. I've only been here 18 months, so there's not a whole lot that I can say about parking garage or anything else. However, I live at 2135 Baldwin Park Drive in Mount Pleasant, in Park West, and I echo what Greg said about disallowing the development of Cambridge Square. I have a whole bunch of statistics, just getting into it the other night. I'm not gonna bore you with them, but I think that the traffic impact analysis is flawed seriously, understates the tremendous load that's gonna be put on Park West Boulevard, which the developers' traffic analysis shows to be overloaded already, that unless that road is expanded, it's gonna cause even more serious problems. I think there's also a problem with the effect and the impact on the schools in the Park West community. That's all I have to say. Please disallow the developer.
Joe Busto, 649 King Street here in Mount Pleasant. First of all, I'd like to remind everyone that Mount Pleasant purchased 40 acres of marsh and highland on the west side of Shem Creek to prevent condos and a marina being built in Shem Creek. Additionally, an overlay district was established on the eastern side to prevent a hotel, which was ultimately disapproved, and to prevent anything from encroaching on the waterborne business area of Shem Creek. I think your decision was wise to not allow public money for this. However, I would ask you not to let the developer get off by providing an incomplete development by simply excising the public money. If he hasn't developed or delivered on everything, it should be disapproved. It should go back into the planning process. Lastly, I would just like to say the comments tonight, if we've listened to them, have been about over-density, and we need to pay attention to that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, town council members. My name is Dave Schimpf. I live at 1551 Ben Sawyer Boulevard. It's Simmons Point. I'm on the board of Simmons Point, and I'm also on the board of the Save Shem Creek Corporation, a new addition to that board. I have to tell you, I've been coming to the commission meetings, the committee meetings, town council meetings. I know you're tired of seeing my face at these things, and frankly, I'm tired of coming to these meetings, but I'm not going away. And I dare say that the people here aren't going away either. The groundswell is growing. I'd also like to point out that I am equally as disappointed and distressed that the town council seems to be in a confrontational situation with a lot of the citizens. That's not the way government's supposed to work. That's not good governance. And I flawed the vote tonight to take the public money out of the garage, but as Joe said, that project needs to be shot in the head as well. What I really would just want to emphasize is that your friends and neighbors, we trust you, you are elected representatives, please, please listen to us. I beseech you to do that. And I'd just like to tag on to the comments of that wonderful poem. "There's one boat on one river." And what your friends and neighbors are telling you is that that boat is off course. Please listen to us so we can get it back on course and right the ship. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
Evening, Mayor, Councilmen. When I came here tonight, I had a very special harangue, but I'm gonna calm that all down because you guys did a good thing. You got rid of.
Did you state your name?
Oh, John Collins. I'm at 1551 Ben Sawyer.
Thank you.
So I'll just go on. "Time and perception. If we had more of the former, the latter perception wouldn't be nearly as suspect and negative. Jamming this item onto an already full agenda created suspicion. The perception that it has been done for special interests, whether or not this is the case. Time, how can the council and the various bodies, Planning Commission, the Planning Committee, the Planning Staff, et cetera, do justice to any of these plans roaring down the urban corridor track? They can't. Stop this runaway train. Three days' notice for this item is absurd, not nearly enough. I beg you to do the town so a service and put a stake to the heart of this empiric project. It does nothing to benefit our town and much to detract from a beautiful and significant part of our heritage." I'll end with, there's a famous quote from Lord Meredith on the government of Lord North, whose main contribution to history was to preside over the loss of the American colonies and inspire the American Revolution. I quote, "So perversely, so inflexibly persisting in error on every occasion as to cause surprise that they never deviate into sense, nor stumble upon propriety by downright accident."
The council's gonna take a five-minute recess. Oh, are you, I'm sorry. I thought you'd already spoke. You here to speak on something else?
I'm, I'm ready.
Okay, that's fine. I'm sorry, I thought I had asked y'all to line up, so.
Well, we'll ask the way you want it.
Apologies. Okay, I'm gonna talk real fast because I got a lot of stuff. Keep up with the urban sprawl going up Highway 17, and you'll have to do what Honolulu is doing right now. I just moved here from there. I lived here, there for 11 years. If you think you've got a beautiful place to live, they've got a beautiful place to live, too. They're building a friggin' monorail. They let too many people live there. I'm sorry, I'm still Margaret, my name is Michael. I still live at 1511 Ben Sawyer Boulevard. Two words for you: public transportation. Let's keep our rustic sand and pebble seafood restaurant parking lots. They're part of the ambiance of Mount Pleasant, just like the Trolley's Lighthouse. I wouldn't know what to do if I pulled into that crunchy gravelly parking lot to go to one of the restaurants and the lighthouse that I climbed every summer when I was five years old, from when I was five years old, and only got to spend one week at the beach each year, and only got to go out one night because there were seven of us in the family. That lighthouse was gone, I'd be really upset. If that crunchy parking lot was gone, I wouldn't feel like I was at the beach. Let's run a nice, pretty, open-air, electric vehicle trolley system with informed drivers wearing hands-free microphones as they point out the historic locations along the route and provide bet-you-didn't-know factoids about Mount Pleasant to the visitors and the residents. Bet you didn't know the price of a hotel room in Mount Pleasant is X percent lower than it is downtown Charleston. Bet you didn't know there's a water taxi service that runs from Patriots Point, so you can stay in Mount Pleasant in one of those hotels where we'll get your hospitality money, tax money, and you won't have to park downtown. A trolley is not just transportation, it's a tourist attraction, and hopefully, a free one for all riders. We can run it from downtown Charleston to Patriots Point, across the bridge, show them the golf course, show them the Yorktown, show them Old Yon Village going slow and carefully down Pitch Street. Show them Mount Pleasant Town Center and let them get off if they want to so they can go shopping. Let the developer build his present parking garage somewhere out on Highway 17 on dry land that does not encroach upon the marsh. Hospitality funds can be spent on the trolley system, too.
Hi, I'm Andrea Lewis. I'm 1656 Seaway Fort Road and Wheatstone subdivision in Tennesse and Park West. And as Greg said and everyone else, I want you to think about the quality of life. And from Cambridge Square, just say no to the Cambridge Square variance, that's a big deal. And for everyone else that's here, what we're trying to say from a Mount Pleasant standpoint is we want quality over quantity. Hashtag quality over quantity. Quality of life.
I want to say amen to that.
My name is Marty Adams. I live at 409 Royal Avenue. My name is Marty Adams. I live at 409 Royal Avenue, and I'm a member of the Save Shem Creek Corporation Board. Mayor Page, members of the town council, other concerned citizens of Mount Pleasant, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I do appreciate that we live in a democracy where votes mean no taxation without representation. I have two concerns about the still lingering possibility of a parking garage being built on Shem Creek, because the builder can still do it, it's just we're not gonna now have town money. There is the spirit of the Coleman Boulevard Revitalization Advisory Board Report, and then there's the letter of the zoning laws, and our concern that the garage encroaches into the Marine District, which is an area protected by zoning regulations. I will address the spirit of the CRAV, which is that the revitalization will come through economic growth and enhancement of the beauty of our town. The CRAV report says that selected areas along Coleman, such as Shem Creek, must be protected. Building heights there should be no higher than 40 feet. The report says Shem Creek is a natural and historic asset of Mount Pleasant. It is a public treasure owned by the hearts and souls of the citizens of Mount Pleasant, and careful consideration must be given to protect Shem Creek. Building a parking garage on Shem Creek is not protecting the public treasure. To allow this area to be developed into a way that distracts from its historical coastal village character is to make our town look like anywhere USA. We want to preserve the character of Mount Pleasant, not just for sentimental reasons. Studies show that community distinctiveness is a critical element for economic success. If we want prosperity, we must retain the character of Mount Pleasant and Shem Creek. If we need garages, there are other places to build them. The possibilities for increasing ugliness, noise, traffic congestion, and shrinking open spaces in our town are numerous.
Thank you. That's your two minutes.
There is no reason that Mount Pleasant be a terrible place.
Good evening, I'm Jim Owens. I live at 1197 Island View Drive. I'm a native son, lifelong resident. While I applaud what you've done tonight by eliminating the public funds, I'm disappointed that we can't go a little bit further and eliminate this garage altogether. As you can see in this photograph here, I don't know, I don't know that anybody in our chamber can see the lighthouse that is behind it, or any of the restaurants that are behind it on Shem Creek either. This is a site plan of the project. You'll see that it encroaches 30 feet into the Shem Creek Overlay District. How and why and by whom? I'm not sure. I'd like to get to the bottom of that. But as you can see, the Marine District zoning is at the end of the arrow on the right side. Next slide, please. Here, you're looking at storm scepter and level flow spreaders that are in fact outside of the 30-foot encroachment that was allowed. 30-foot line here, this is indicating 30 feet is outside of where this line is dictating. Next slide, please. Again, you'll see a more definitive indication of where the flow spreaders and the storm scepter, storm drainage receptacles are, and it's a clear indication, given the fact that in the zoning interpretation, you would not extend not more than 30 feet. Again, not more than 30 feet. It's outside of the 30-foot limitation. Next slide, please.
Jimmy, you have about five seconds.
The blow-up of this area is further indicates much more clearly that you've got 30 feet, and you're outside with your storm drainage system.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you speaking.
Madam Mayor, I have signed officially to, like behind him on the signing sheet, I'd like to delay my two minutes.
You can't do it after the fact. I'm sorry, sir. You would have had to indicate that. I signed up this morning.
We will, we will take our town back.
Thank you.
That's a promise.
No, sir, we do not, this council has business to do. I appreciate you coming. I'm gonna give you just two minutes. Y'all are all welcome. You're welcome to come up if you sign up.
Folks, I don't need the two minutes. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Madam Mayor and members of council, I've been coming up here now for almost a year and a half or better, and we have been telling you that we're not a small group of people, that a small group of zealous agitators or whatever. The people in this town are tired of this. I have been coming up here for 16, 17 months, and I have not heard one person yet stand up and say, "This is the greatest plan that we have ever seen." Where are those folks? Because everybody that I've heard has said, "Enough, enough is enough." We had the Boy Scouts in here a little earlier this afternoon, and they were in here to get their citizenship merit badge. What I would like to do is to give all these folks that are sitting in this audience a citizenship merit badge. Because I can tell you, without their participation, without their concern for this town, I doubt if this action would have been taken tonight. It's only through their efforts and their communication with you to let you know how they feel that you guys turned this thing around. I applaud you on eliminating the public money, but we need to rescind the Coleman Overlay Plan. We need to take back our Coleman Boulevard. Somebody, I was speaking to a group the other day, and a local developer said, "Jimmy, well, what is your vision for the town of Mount Pleasant?" And I looked at him and said, "Well, I think I've got some ideas, but one thing I know, the Boulevard and that garage are not my vision for the town of Mount Pleasant." I've lived here all my life. I'm 66 years old. When I was 12 years old, I swam in Shem Creek, I voted in Shem Creek, I fished in Shem Creek. When I was 30 years old, I made my living on Shem Creek. And now that I'm 66, I'm finally getting a chance to live with Shem Creek. And I'm telling you, folks, it is the heart and soul of this town. When you come to Mount Pleasant, all you think about is going down and sitting on the dock at Shem Creek and eating some fried shrimp. And I'm telling you, we need to save it, we need to do away with this garage, and we need to turn around the plans that are in place now. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Nancy Fairless. I live at 1111 Simmons Street in Mount Pleasant, and I wasn't going to speak tonight because you did what I was gonna come up here and implore you to do. You took the tax money away from the development, and you did not. But I had some other concerns that I was gonna wait and let people that speak better and research better and know better than I do what's going on, such as Jim Owens. So I'm taking the two minutes he wasn't allowed to say those things he was pointing out, and the 30 feet that extends into a different zone where business is not allowed. I think that should be looked at hard. I think there has been much gray area in that and other developments in this town. And now I think there's some shady areas in the developments of this town. And so for the rest of my two minutes, I think everybody should take a deep look, everybody in this audience, at what Mr. Owens was trying to point out to us, and we need to get that garage stopped. Thank you.
Can you still have your, one more figure? That's fine.
Jeff Kirkland, age 17, Pitt Street Old Village. Like a lot of people, I have been coming to these meetings for 18, 18 months. Daytime meetings, morning meetings, night meetings, council meetings, and all this. And, you know, you guys have finally come to a fork in the road. I'm glad to see some people changing. I've noticed the vote, nice of you guys, voted screaming and kicking, wanting, that you wanted to vote the other way. But, you know, the issue with this is that it seems to be over the last 18 months that we. that we have found, we've seen where the town has tried to allow developers to shoehorn things into areas they have not needed to do or be able to do. And planning has found some rather constructive ways of allowing things to be put in areas that they did not, should not have, like the sidewalk house, you know, which probably got this whole thing started and all this. But I would ask that, now that you guys have come to a fork in the road, you've passed the vote I want you to pass tonight regarding the parking garage. But be careful in what goes on behind closed doors, either the council level or at the staff level, to where that the laws that Mr. Owens was trying to show are adhered to the letter. And there were a lot of things I was going to say, but I didn't stop right there.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. We're going to take a five-minute recess and then we'll get back to do business. All right, we're ready to move on. We're going to turn this over to Ms. Farrell for planning. And item number one under planning new businesses, a first reading on ordinance at Pepper Plantation. Ms. Farrell?
This is on a first reading for, this is actually building, two parcels of land that will be zoned part of Pepper Plantation. An annexation.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second for a first reading on a ordinance to zone, rezone. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, and the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number one-five-zero-one-zero, an ordinance to zone A, B, C, D, planned development conservation design district, two tracts of land comprising lots twelve and twenty-eight located in Pepper Plantation subdivision.
Item number two is a first reading on a property annexation, one point two-nine acres on Weaver Circle and Hungry Lake Boulevard.
Madam Mayor, I have to defer items two and three.
I have a motion, do you have, yes, can you clarify?
Five months. Up to.
I have a motion and a second to defer items number two and three on the first reading for a period of time up to five months. All in favor? Aye, opposed, and the ayes have it. Item number four is a first reading on an ordinance to amend the Dunes West Plan Development District, ordinance pertaining to a portion known as Cambridge Square.
Move to defer items four, deny. Would that's moved to deny?
Moved to deny items four.
I'll second that.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second for items four and five for denial. Any other discussion? Yes, sir?
Madam Mayor, I don't know how this vote will be, but if it is denied, I would encourage the developer to, as I've already spoken with him, I've met some of the residents and the concerns, to have those concerns addressed. And I believe there's a middle road there, but the residents need to be there.
Thank you very much, so I have a motion and a second for the denial. Any other discussion? All in favor to deny? Aye, opposed, and the ayes have it. Item number six is a first reading on an ordinance providing for the annexation of a piece of land in Panther Court on Myrick Road. I have a motion and a second for approval of annexation, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, and the ayes have it.
First reading, ordinance number one-four, an ordinance providing for annexation of parcel of land located at 1093 Washington Court, aka 1093 Panther Court, FNA 1319, see Myrick Road identified by TMS number five-three-two-zero-eight-zero-zero-zero-three-seven.
Thank you, item number seven is a first reading on another annexation of ten point zero-seven acres of land on the north side of US seventeen North in Ten Mile.
Madam Mayor, I have to defer items seven and eight up to five months.
I have a motion and a second to defer items number seven and eight for a period of up to five months. Any further discussion? Mr. Nichols?
Is there a stated basis for the deferral? I know that the planning commission had a recommendation and the planning committee also took a vote. Was the genesis of the request for the deferral?
None was, nothing was provided other than the request for the deferral.
For how long?
A period up to five months, the motion. Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to vote no against this because I might have voted no on this project tonight, but that's my stated reason.
Thank you very much, any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, and I have not spoken with the, you took this, or my understanding though, from a previous conversation, I have spoken with the mayor today, is that this is a workforce housing project and they want to see their consideration for adjustment on the sizes that they're putting in and to see if there's favor among council members for a redesign. So I believe that's not a basis for, I don't know exactly.
Yes, sir, Mr. Garch?
Ms. Farrell, I was exactly waiting to ask you for the deferral. Come back to do.
I would assume to come back to town council.
No, straight to town council. They realize that they deviate this plan anyway. That's not the right course of action.
Yes, sir.
Is everyone clear on the motion for deferral? All in favor of the deferral? Opposed? Who called it? Mr. Carrier?
Nay.
Mr. Garch?
Ooh.
Mr. Glass?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Nay.
Mr. O'Neill?
No.
Mr. Santos?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Page? Nay. And the, no, it's Carrie. For the deferral, denied the deferral.
Denied.
So the matter is on the agenda again. What's the nature of the council, the board of council?
Move to deny items seven and eight. Settle. Motion to deny items seven and eight.
I have a motion and a second to deny items seven and eight. Discussion?
With all due respect, I am motion to deny items seven and eight. I would just like to say for the record that this is an item, a developer who is attempting to address the need for affordable workforce and senior housing in the town of Mount Pleasant. Our town's comprehensive plan calls for workforce and affordable housing in the town of Mount Pleasant. As opposed to council just turning this project down, I would like to see us at least make an effort to try to work with and collaborate with those developers who are attempting to address the need for affordable and workforce housing in the town.
Thanks, Mr. Stone. Other comments, Mr. Carrier?
I do sympathize with Councilwoman Stokes-Marshall. And I was on board with this, but it's kind of an over, we've been overrun with information from the county as far as the density issues up there and the CARDA, the public transportation issues. There's just a lot going against this project and I don't think we should carry it forward too much longer.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Comments, Mr. Garch?
Yes, thank you. I would think in action we took to knock out the deferral, send a clear message that we do want to work with them for a better plan because the one they're submitting to us is not going to be accepted. So that's why we had stated before, we got to this part, they realize that if they come back in five months and they've changed it, it's not coming back to us. So just a little bit of a disconnect there. I mean, there's still an opportunity, but it's, they've got a ways to go based on unfortunately where that piece of property is located.
Thank you, any other comments from council?
I'd just like to say that either our council is going to follow the recommendation of our comp plan to address the need for affordable housing in the town of Mount Pleasant or we're not. And I think when the opportunity presents itself, you know, a lot of people, they want to think that we don't need affordable housing here. But we hear the opposite from most people who work here but cannot afford to live here. From seniors, one of our seniors that has spoke tonight. So I just want to put it out there, I don't want the vote to just go with a no without me making some comments that this council needs to give serious consideration to affordable housing in the town of Mount Pleasant, it is a problem.
Was there another comment for councilmember, yes, sir?
Madam Mayor, I certainly don't want this to come across as a vote that's not for workforce housing. I think the issue with this area is in Charleston County, it's one house per three acres, so right now you could put three houses on it. They've proposed sixty-five and it's outside of the urban growth boundary, which is just not the place where I think this is necessitated. And I think the further conversation about workforce housing that troubles me is, I went back and ran the numbers, in 2013, we ran numbers on workforce housing for a household of four, it was a $287,000 house. At today's interest rates, if my math is right, it's a $315,000, $320,000 house. And we can't cap the price on workforce housing any more than what the growth allows for. So to take and potentially have sixty-five houses or we could have had three, $320,000 a home, that's more than Tupelo, which is not a workforce housing development, which is right next door and is a one unit per acre with cluster development. So I don't want to be misconstrued as that this vote tonight is against workforce housing and I do hear you, Rob, and I know that this is something you push for and I wish we could get it closer in and we could get it in affordable housing and unfortunately this just isn't the right place.
I understand all the ramifications, Chris, I just felt the need to put it back in.
Absolutely, I just, as information is public about what we were discussing, why I wanted them to be informed about what this project and proposal was and why. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chrissy, could you pull back up the, Madam Mayor, I drove out and looked at the site there and go back one right there. And the eight houses that are proposed along Avenue Seventeen, I would echo Councilman O'Neill's comments. I am in support of the spirit of the workforce housing. And you know that I voted against this in planning committee and I drove out there and I didn't get my Cadillac stuck as I drove around that pond there. And I just, with the picture that I pulled back up that I took there looking at, I just cannot see, if you're seated where those twenty condos are in the middle of that road and looking across the road, in the picture that I'm looking at, there's two homes across the way that divide that entire space where eight homes are proposed to go. I was in support of deferring this matter for a completely different look of this, but I wouldn't be supporting this in that area. So thank you, I appreciate that, Madam Mayor. It's too dense, it's too much, it doesn't fit for the area. And I'm aware that the back of that butts Tupelo, which is being cleared. There's a great gear stand in that wetland area, Madam Mayor, also. I don't recommend you picking out my back there.
Thank you, Mr. Glass, any other comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. And I would concur with the comments that Mr. Smith and others made on density. I know that the, some of the comments that the developer didn't make a while back was that the density that surrounds the community and Mr. Garch's acute nature of our process is correct in denying this and I would follow that with a potential motion to allow them to come back with some redesign if they so choose and waive that one-year window. So they would have an opportunity to, would have to come back to redesign and then let council have at it at that point.
Thank you, I appreciate all your comments. Ms. Farrell, did you have a comment as well?
Yes, ma'am, I just, I did want to remind everyone, this was a motion to deny both first reading of annexation as well as zoning. And just as a reminder, if an annexation is denied, that does provide the ability for this developer to approach Mount Pleasant Water Works for the sewer and potentially develop in the county.
I don't want to get sidetracked by them talking about that. They have to sign, Madam Mayor, they would have to sign our agreement letter which Mount Pleasant Water Works, and I'll be glad to remind them of that agreement that Water Works in the town has that they would have to annex it.
Or we could amend the motion to take the annexation out.
I'm willing to amend my motion to allow for the annexation. Someone just wanted to withdraw their second. I'm withdrawing my motion.
You're withdrawing for item seven, which is the annexation.
I'm withdrawing my motion for item seven.
And who was the second? Mrs. Santos? Second was Mr. Santos. And, I know, he's fine, but we have a comment, Mr. Garch?
I just want to be clear, that motion is that we want annex the property but not rent them zoning or something. I guess right, I guess quite to be unameric, in my opinion. We shouldn't do that. I mean, that's, I can't go there. And I don't want to muddy the waters here. Also, talking about workforce housing, you heard a lot of people tonight write comments about it's too dense, get it, more quality over quantity, get that too. We hear all, this is a fluid community. I've struggled with this since 2006 and I don't have an answer. And I haven't had anybody yet to give me an answer and I'm all ears. But we're going to seriously get aggressive one day about workforce housing. The government's going to have to be involved. We can't tell people what they're going to charge, not in this country. We have to understand that. But again, I realize I got a little off, I'm going to throw our pictures at you, what these folks are trying to do. As we all know, they're past the urban growth boundary line. And that brings all its challenges. And you see the setup, here's the twenty units and here are regular houses, it's all together. I'm out here all ears, part-time worker, sir, I need help. It's hard with workforce housing.
Well, it's also a bonus density. Could you explain to us what the bonus density issue is with workforce housing in this particular development?
Workforce housing does allow for an increase in density. This particular type of development could go up to eight units per acre. There is thirty percent requirement for workforce housing in the balance, it could be twenty percent and the balance can be market rate units. So there is additional density. Mr. O'Neill, I already kind of spoke to that as comparison with this particular development proposal versus what can actually be accomplished if I'm just annexation. If property was simply just annexed, the property, there would only be, you would only be able to, the density here is...
One unit per three acres. So the density as it sits is one unit per three acres.
So they could get a total of three units. There is the ability within the code of cluster development if they set aside fifty percent open space. So half of this land would have to be open space. And then if that occurs, the density can be changed to a one-to-one. So the maximum would be ten, total of ten units on the property. What's been proposed and is allowed through workforce housing is the potential to go all the way up to eighty units.
Eighty units per...
Eighty units total for this development, eight units per acre.
Okay, so obviously it's a complicated issue and I appreciate your explanation of that. I think we learned a lot today and sometimes I want to defend you because one of the things that the town does really, really well is cluster development. And I really appreciate that that's fifty percent open space within a development. So we do have things that are in place to get what appears to be more density without actually becoming more dense. But in the case of some of our other items like workforce housing or mixed use, there are bonus densities allowed, correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to put that up there, yes?
Procedurally, can we do anything, Mr. Santos? Is there an extension about it? Mr. Santos is back.
Yeah, we're waiting on you. So we have, they, Chris has amended his motion for annexation and he would send it to draw it.
I would withdraw my motion on item seven for annexation. Looks as though we still need to annex the property so as if they don't go to Mount Pleasant Water Works to receive services, stay in trouble.
I understand, I withdraw my second.
Can we split that up here for a moment? Thank you, please. The applicant can receive water if it's over by Mount Pleasant.
The applicant can receive water and sewer by Mount Pleasant Water Works, there are two conditions in that. One of them is it's been denied, and the second is that it's consistent with our comprehensive plan. Now, the only way this is consistent with our comprehensive plan is if they exercise the workforce housing component, which is proposed, is that correct?
No. The consistency with the comprehensive plan is based on the future land use, the density. In this case, the maximum that I explained was a total of ten units, the one-to-one. But it could be developed in Charleston County.
Question.
Yes, sir. Ms. Carrier?
Question to Ms. Farrell, we got a letter from Charleston County, we've got a copy of that letter, talking about RR three, now explain that to me.
It's the same as the town. We have, yes, sir, yes, sir.
But they were discouraging this to be developed by us?
They thought it was too dense.
Was that a preference for them?
So I think to speak further to that, if there were the ability for this annexation was denied, and they approached Charleston County, and then we also, I guess they got past the issue with Mount Pleasant Water Works, I don't think that Charleston County would be inclined, at least as represented by their staff, to have a development of this density.
Did you say would not?
Would not.
Thank you.
Okay. No, not at this point, well, we're in this discussion, thank you. Yes.
Would therefore, while there's a motion about number eight, sort of...
We have no motion on number seven.
Number seven.
It's been withdrawn.
Do we want to take these, go back and try and take them in order?
I would take number seven first.
That's what I'm trying to say, should we take number seven first?
That would be appropriate.
I'll move to...
Move to accept the request for an amendment.
Thank you, go ahead, second. I have a motion and a second on item number seven, which is the annexation of the property ten point seven acres in Ten Mile, any further discussion?
I just want to ask a question. Being that the project has been voted down, does the...
Okay, okay, but does the applicant want to move forward with the annexation?
I will offer that this is first reading, they would have the opportunity to make a different request to you before final reading.
Okay, because they may choose very well on that thing.
This is first reading, so we have motion, second for first reading of annexation, any further discussion? All in favor of annexation? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Two noes.
First reading orders number one five zero one five, and orders provided for the annexation of three tracts of land comprising approximately ten point zero seven acres, located on the north side of US Highway Seventeen North in the Ten Mile community.
Item number eight is the ordinance to zone that planned development workforce housing, that's saying ten point seven acres, and what's the favor of the committee?
I have to deny that immediately.
I have motion and a second for denial of item number eight, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any ideas here? Moving on to old business.
Madam Mayor, I apologize, Mr. Smith made a motion for, to deny items four and five, and I made a comment to encourage the developer to go back with the residents following meetings, however, I neglected to move to allow them to waive the one-year, in the spirit of them getting together, I think it would benefit the residents and nor the community if we were to waive that one-year, not move that way, waive that one-year requirement so they can continue on this development.
For clarification, are they asking for waiver, and this is item four and five, or this is the item we just heard?
No, items four and five were not deferred, they were denied.
Denied, okay, thank you, let me go back to my notes.
He's referring to Cambridge Square.
Okay, that's fine. So we're going back to that issue, and you'd like to...
Waive the one-year waiting period.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I apologize, yes, a motion.
For clarification, the parliamentarian is suggesting that the applicant would be the one that would ask for the waiver, that's why I was asking, we had asked for a waiver. I believe the applicant is here, would you like to speak on that?
Yes, thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Kevin Steelman, Park West Development, Acre Thirty Three Oh One, Salt Quebec Street. Sorry, I'm not a mayor, council, I'd signed in to speak this evening, and normally you ask the applicant to speak before you vote on an item, but somehow we missed that. But at any rate, as Ken did allude to, we've had a number of comments throughout this process, we have put the property back under contract and trying to move forward with the plan of development, which we did put for you and was denied. We've been working with and look forward to the opportunity to work with both the town and the homeowners to go back to drawing board and put a plan forward that would allow us to move this project forward, and we would ask to, or respect the request that you waived the one-year period and allow us to take the time to go back, revisit our plans, and come back to you with something that would be more appropriate.
So now for the record, we have a request for a waiver, I have a motion, I do not have a second.
A second, that is to come back to the planning commission.
That is correct, and we'll start the process all over this way.
Process, that's, is that the right process? I mean, I know the answer, I just like to hear it on tape recorder.
Okay, good, so we have a motion and a second on the tape recorder, so we can go back to the plan mentioned, and I have a comment for Mr. O'Neill.
Madam Mayor, we're going to take up later an issue that came out of the planning committee for which we, there was a request that should a plan development agreement amendment come forward, they would be required to wait sixty days for staff to review. That plan development agreement as it came forward, and this is sitting in a plan development agreement, I'd ask that our staff have at least sixty days to look at this, I don't think it's something that's ready to come back next month, and we're going to take that up later. So, I'm okay with waiving the waiting period, but this is not an issue that's really to come back for this council next March at this point.
Thank you.
Right, it's subject to all typical requirements, meaning you have to go back to the process again anyway, so I think we have the normally allotted timeframe to review the project without having to do that.
Correct, but given the change, I suppose that it could not go on March, it couldn't come till April at the earliest, given the change, I hope that we will make later in this meeting. I'm not sure of the time.
That proposal was specific to development agreements, which this is a plan development zoning, but it does not have a development agreement with it.
It's a twenty-five year old.
So it's, it would be, if it was, this is a fact, Larry, it would be standing, it would be four weeks before the meeting date is when this medal would be.
Did you have another comment, Mr. Glasson?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I don't know that an artificial sixty-day window, if the developer and the residents are to sit down and come to agree, and they bring through the process, the same as they would a new application, I don't know that an artificial sixty-day window would warrant being imposed at this point.
Well, it would warrant this case because it was about development agreements, not plan developments. It's not a, yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
Can someone tell me, maybe it's Mr. Garret, or Mr. Santos, Mr. Stokes Marshall, been here a long time, what was the idea behind enacting a one-year waiting period to begin? Does anyone know that? Because ordinarily, unless it's waived, if a certain thing is denied, you have to go into, in wait a year, right? And then it sort of became, at least in my short time here, that routinely, people have asked for a waiver of that, and I can't really think of a time where that hasn't been granted. So what was the thought about prior councils or primaries or planning in general, that it was, you know, someone should wait a year? Is it to encourage bringing a finely honed, you know, plan to begin with, or is it a number that just came out of the blue? Can anyone help me?
Yeah, I think that's what it was, Chris, because some of them coming back for another bite of the apple, and like we just saw with another development, as you remember, at the last meeting we had, another development wanted to come back, and we had a discussion about that, about holding true to this, and because what was happening is, it seemed like they were coming back, and coming back, and coming back, and coming to our staff, and making our staff drop what they were doing to go over again, and help them fine-tune their development. This is what I, I think I got out of this. So the idea was that, you know, we need to, in my opinion, you know, start holding true to this, and they can wait a year so that when they come with that development, it's done, they've gone over it, it's, you know, ready to go. But as we've seen lately, they keep coming back, we keep waiting, and they come back for another bite of the apple, and I just don't think it's fair to our staff to have to continue to help teach them what they should be doing in order to get their development approved, that's just my take on it.
In that vein, let's say the one-year that's been requested is not waived tonight, can the council, meeting thirty days from now or sixty days from now, vote to lessen that time period or particular thing, or does it have to, does the waiver have to occur now, or you'd never get that, you'd never get a waiver again?
It's council's decision whether or not they choose to go for the full one-year waiver, or if the developer requests that the waiver is a shorter period of time. And we have had developers who have come and requested a lesser time than a year, that's a discussion.
As a point of order, if they bring a plan that's substantially different than the one they've submitted, then they don't have to meet the one-year waiting requirement, they don't have to do that. Does that go wrong, Chris, again?
Well, if it's a different zoning request, and so that would have to, I don't know that we can answer that exactly, we would have to see, I mean, zoning request is obviously going to be to end the plan development, no matter what, because in this particular case, because this is the plan development. How substantially different it may be is something we would have to evaluate.
Let me perhaps, if council, if this is factoring, if council in a few minutes decided to not waive the one-year requirement tonight, does that bind six months from now if a developer, this one, anyone else came forward and said, we're ready, we've got this, we're asking for a waiver for the requirement?
I think they can make another request.
They can make another request for a waiver at that time.
We have a motion on the floor, and a second to allow a waiver on the Cambridge Square project, item number four and five. Any further discussion? All in favor of granting waiver? Aye. Opposed? No. You got the three, three noes. Four. I'm seeing Mr. Marshall, Gary.
Five, four, one.
Okay, now, moving on to old business. Item number one on old business is a motion to reconsider final reading of ordinance one four zero seven nine.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to reconsider that final reading, any discussion? Yes? Point of order?
Yes, I would vote for that.
Okay, so for point of order, you was the one.
It was the unanimous.
It was the unanimous. It was the unanimous. Thank you, so we have a motion to reconsider, no other discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any ideas here? Now, the second item is this issue, the final reading, which was an ordinance to rezone from AB, area-wide business to AB two, area-wide business to District Two, parcels of land comprising approximately one point three eight acres, located at fourteen twenty-six and fourteen sixty-three.
Final reading, second.
US Seventeen North. Can you show us on the map, please, for clarity?
So this is Highway Seventeen, right here, this is the frontage road that runs in front of Abadewell and Lamb's Auto, and so the properties in question, actually above I five twenty-six, and it is these two properties for, to which the zoning request applies.
Okay, and so everyone in the audience will understand, we are reconsidering this final reading, it was unanimously failed. Some of the council members felt like they only reconsidered their vote, it was a long evening, as is this evening, so I'd like to call for the vote, if you don't mind, so this is now a motion to approve.
Correct.
Mr. Carrier?
Aye.
Mr. Garret?
Aye.
Mr. Glasson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
No.
Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks Marshall?
Aye.
Mary Page?
No.
Any ideas here?
Final reading orders number one four zero seven nine, and orders to rezone from AB, area-wide business district, AB two, area-wide business two, district, two parcels of land comprising approximately one point three eight acres, located at fourteen twenty-six and fourteen sixty-three, US Highway Seventeen North.
Thank you, item number three is a final reading on an ordinance on a vacant tract of land, known as Howell Street, was known as Howell Street, now Lyman Lane.
Move for approval.
I have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any ideas here?
Final reading orders number one four zero five two, and orders providing for the annexation of approximately one point zero seven acres vacant tract of land being portioned of what is twenty, known as Howell Street, now known as Lyman Lane, such portion now identified by TMS number five, street two zero eight zero 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 nine six, and shown on a plaque recorded in the plaque book S five eight of the Charleston County RMC office.
Number four is the zoning on that same piece of property.
Move for approval.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any ideas here?
Final reading orders number one four zero five three, and orders to zone AB, area-wide business district, and UCO D, urban quarter, overlay district, approximately one point zero seven acre box of land located on the former Howell Street, Chuck Daly Boulevard, now known as Lyman Lane, identified by TMS number five three two zero eight zero 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 nine six.
Thank you, item number five is a final reading on an annexation and cover plantation on Rose Petri.
Final rating. Five, nine, six.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second for two pieces of property of cover plantation, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? One noe.
Final reading orders number one five zero zero three, and orders providing for the annexation approximately three acre parcel of land, known as Lot Twelve, located at fourteen seventy-two, old road, and a trail cover plantation, identified by TMS number six one five zero 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 one four seven, and shown on a plaque recorded by PBEG nine seven eight, Charleston County RMC office. Final reading orders number one five zero zero four, and orders providing for the annexation of approximately two point four acre parcel of land, known as Lot Twenty-Eight, located at thirty-five fifteen, or Addams Court, cover plantation, identified by TMS number six one five zero 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 one five nine, and shown on a plaque recorded in PBEG nine seven eight, nine seven nine, at the Charleston County RMC office.
Item number seven is a final reading of bill of plan development about maximum lot size coverage.
Final rating.
I have a motion and a second for final reading, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any ideas here?
Final reading orders number one five zero zero eight, and orders to provide for amendment to bill of plan development district ordinance, as amended by a ruling of thirty-five percent of actions to cite coverage limitation for portion of the...
Thank you, I'd ask that all the committee chairs, please give your reports to the clerk for the record. Moving on to the administrative report.
An option of vacancy on the old builder's historic district commission, if the builder's in store for permission.
Council no business was taken up earlier in the amended agenda, we have under B, old business, a final reading to amend the budget for town.
Move for final rating.
I have a motion and a second to amend the budget, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Final reading orders number one five zero zero nine, and orders to amend the budget to the town of Mount Pleasant, fiscal year commencing July first, twenty thirteen, ending June thirty, twenty fifth.
We have a need to go into executive session for some legal and contractual matters as well as a personnel item. Do I hear a motion?
No moves.
And a second? We are now in executive session.